I am going to call the meeting to order, so we will need to go live. Okay. And I wanted to say good evening to everyone. And Mrs. Wilson, before you start, I want to tell you all that Dr. Sapini is on vacation this evening and will not be joining us. But I do have some thoughts from him that I will share at the appropriate time. Okay? All right, Ms. Wilson, go forth.
Okay, so. Let me read your statement first, as soon as I can get it back up.
While Angie's doing that, can I just do one quick thing, Ms. Owen?
You certainly missed your cameras.
I would like to formally introduce Sandra Lee, our new chief talent officer. She's on the bottom right of my screen. I don't know where she is on all of yours.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening. It's nice to virtually meet you, and I look forward to working with you.
Oh, shoot.
Well, welcome.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes, Ms. Wilson?
Sure. simultaneous translation is being provided tonight in Spanish via Zoom. The link to access the Zoom meeting can be found in the meeting notice. And once logged in, click interpretation and select Spanish to listen to the interpretation. All meeting participants are encouraged to speak slowly and deliberately to allow for accurate translation. This meeting, your notice indicated that this meeting was being held as an electronic meeting pursuant to and in compliance with the City of Richmond Ordinance 2020-093 and the school board's resolution approved on April 20th, 2020. The notice of the meeting stated the following, that the meeting would be a virtual meeting and would be live streamed on the school division's Facebook page. The public could view it there, and the link was provided. The board would not receive public comment, however, public comments could be submitted to the clerk at speakers@rvastools.net, and the comments would be shared at the meeting. The agenda for the meeting was posted to the rpsboard site, and the link was also provided. And after roll call, it will be determined how many and which board members were participating. You ready for your roll call?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
But one more. Ms. Burke?
Can you hear me?
Yes, okay.
All right, I can't, I can't see anything. I don't know what happened. I'm back to the original open Zoom meetings page. We can see you.
We can't.
I can't see, well, I can't see anybody, including me.
All right.
Is Matthew still there?
Matthew isn't with us this evening. It's Michael.
Okay, can Michael put me back on? Please?
That's so odd.
It is. It just clicked.
Can you wiggle your mouse or your button? Because.
I've done all of that. I don't know what's.
I don't either. Go ahead with the, let's go ahead with the roll call while he's working on.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Door?
Yes.
Mr. Barlow?
Here.
Ms. Gibson?
Here.
Mr. Young?
Here.
It's been announced that Dr. Sapini will not be here. Ms. Cosby? Ms. Page?
Here.
Ms. Burke?
Yes, here.
Ms. Owen?
Here.
Madam Chair, there are eight of the nine board members participating at this time.
Okay, thank, or eight is Ms.?
I'm sorry, seven. Ms. Cosby's also not present. Thank you.
Okay. I see that Scott is asking that we be in gallery view. Michael, did you get that in the chat? For the Facebook viewers? Okay. Ms. Burke, are you back?
Yes, thank you so much.
Good. Okay, all right. And he's working on the gallery view for our Facebook viewers. So we'll, you'll get to see all of us beautiful selves any, any moment now. All right, so can I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I so moved down chair.
All right, that was Ms. Burke. Do I have a second?
Second.
That was Ms. Page, all right? Ms. Wilson?
I'm sorry, I'm coming. I'm having some technical issues. Okay, so to adopt the agenda, the motion was made by Ms. Burke, seconded by Ms. Page. Mrs. Page?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Hi.
Mrs. Door?
Yes.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
All right. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of June 15th and June 29th?
I move that the minutes are approved as you listed, as listed.
There a second?
Second.
Thank you. Was that Mr. Young or Mr. Barlow?
Mr. Barlow.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Barlow. Okay?
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Hi.
Ms. Door?
Yes.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes, although I did want to note that there is no reference of including in public, the public comments from last time in this meeting. I don't know that it's necessary to include them in the meeting minutes, but I do want to make sure that we read the public comments that were submitted for the last meeting.
I don't know that we'll do that, Ms. Gibson. Let's see when we get there.
Ms. Burke?
Okay.
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
All right. Mr. Avula, I see that you are with us. Mr. Camus, did you want to introduce this part of your administration business?
Sure, thank you so much, Ms. Owen. Well, I'm delighted to have Dr. Avula, the head of the Richmond and Henrico Health Districts, come spend some time with us this evening in response to board member requests that we get a little bit more guidance from our public health and medical officials here in the Richmond area. And Dr. Avula has assembled a team of folks to provide that perspective for us. So with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Avula. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Hello, RPS Board. Thanks so much for allowing us to be a part of this conversation of what I, is undoubtedly one of the most difficult and complex decisions that you all have had to sort through as a board. I want to introduce a few colleagues who are going to join me for this brief presentation. I don't know where they show up on your gallery, but Emily Godbout is a pediatric infectious disease doc at VCU Children's Hospital. And Bergen Nelson is an assistant professor of general pediatrics. And then Ramesh Wijesaria is the chair of general pediatrics, all at VCU Children's Hospital. And so when, when Jason reached out and said it would be great to have a few voices of different medical experts, I put a call out, and these wonderful people answered it. So I want to just say a couple of words of introduction. While we are a bunch of pediatricians and in our clinical capacity, you know, we're seeing and advocating for some of the most vulnerable members of our society. We, some of us are also parents of school-aged kids. At least one of us is married to a middle-aged RPS teacher, although we should probably not mention that I called her that. But all of us are sons and daughters and neighbors and friends to people who face the highest risk in the midst of this current COVID threat. And so I just want to be clear that this is not a conversation from our end that is solely about what's best for kids. Because if we're not thinking and talking about what's best for kids, what's best for the health and safety and well-being of teachers, and ultimately the health, safety and well-being of our entire society, we're missing the boat. So to know that that, the entirety of that perspective is something that we have considered and what we put together for you today. A couple of other things I'll say, that the decision-making around COVID has just been so difficult along the way, right? As a nation and really as like a global society, we have been totally unprepared for this. And just had not had any, I don't know, any sense of just the scope that this pandemic would bring in terms of shifting gears and, and decision-making like closing schools and now potentially opening schools. And, and I also want to just point out that the information that we've needed to make decisions at every step of the way just has not been there. So remember back in March, we were closing schools because we were really worried about the concern for asymptomatic spread. And we, if kids were not going to be showing symptoms, we needed to shut it down because we didn't know what that was going to do to the pandemic at large. And, you know, we were making recommendations to wipe down your groceries every time you bring them home from the grocery store because we were really worried about FOMI spread. But the last four months, we have watched and studied and gathered data. And there are still a lot of things we do not know, but there is a lot that we do know. And there is a growing body of data and evidence that can point us in certain directions. And so, you know, I think for the four of us as physicians and scientists, you know, we're always going to want to lean on the data and use the data to help inform the decisions we make. And then the last sort of introductory point I'll make is that one of the things that has clearly resulted from this pandemic is just an exacerbation of impact on our most marginalized communities, our low-income communities, and our, and the people of color that reside in the city of Richmond. And, and I think it is, in the decision that we're going to talk about here, that is very much the case. It's the case for our kids who are going to suffer disproportionately from a different school experience. It's, it's the case for our teachers who are going to be at higher risk because we have a large number of African-American and other people of color working in the Richmond school system. So I just, I want to lay that out and acknowledge and recognize that this is an incredibly challenging decision for you all. And so today and beyond, please do not hesitate to reach out to me and to any of my colleagues to help, to help moving forward. I'm going to share my screen now and point to a presentation here. Just make sure you all can see this. All right. Whoops. Not that. Present. There you go. Okay, everybody can see that? Great. All right, so we just organized this into four big categories. Look at the evidence in terms of the risk to children, the risk to teachers, the risk to community, and then how might we mitigate all of those risks? And I want to start with some context because, you know, if we were in Florida or Arizona or Texas, this would be a completely different conversation. But I think the reality of what we're seeing in Virginia allows us to have a more nuanced approach to this. And so this is a shot of just the case counts in central Virginia. Because I recognize while our students live here, our, our faculty lives all over the region. And what you see is that from that peak at the end of May, we have seen a continued downward trend of cases. And I want to also clarify that we're not seeing fewer cases because we're doing less testing. As the, the dark blue lines on this graph are the number of tests that are being done in the city of Richmond every single day. And you'll see that over the course of June, we've still had really high rates of testing. But that yellow line is a seven-day moving average of what we call percent positivity. So the proportion of the people that we test that end up being positive. And, and again, we're at, since the beginning, this, we're at the lowest rates of percent positivity. We're 5.2% seven-day moving average, which is phenomenal. And our goal for really significant community mitigation efforts was to get under 10%. Here's a look at the data because as we think about the, our student population, I want you to see a little bit about how they're, how they have been impacted by COVID. So this is statewide data, and we've had over 67,000 cases across the board in Virginia. And what you'll see on the left side of that graph is that these are broken down by age. So about three and a half percent of those cases are in ages zero to nine, and about 7% are 10 to 19. The numbers in Richmond look pretty similar, 4% zero to nine, 8% in the 10 to 19. And, and again, like the numbers are not that high, right? So since the beginning of this pandemic, so our first case in Virginia was March 7th, we've had 99 kids aged zero to nine who have tested positive for COVID and 193 10 to 19. All right, so this is hospitalizations. Because one of the things we'll talk about is that kids are not really severely impacted by this. And what you'll see is that less than 1% of our total hospitalizations are in that age group of zero to nine. And then again, less than 1% in 10 to 19. And that's true for Richmond as well. 0.2%, so a total of five kids in the city of Richmond, zero to nine, have been hospitalized and two 10 to 19. So relatively low rates of cases, very low rates of hospitalizations, and no deaths across the Commonwealth in the zero to 20 population. So just to give you a sense of how kids have been affected by this, and then I will hand off to Emily to talk about the risk to children.
Thank you all so much for inviting me tonight. I'm really honored to be here and share some information with you. So I'm one of the pediatric infectious disease physicians at VCU. And I'm also a hospital epidemiologist and part of the infection prevention and control department. So my life has been COVID, 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 as I'm sure many of you have been dealing with this every day as well. Next slide. So first question, do kids get COVID? So yes, certainly, kids across all ages can get COVID. But there is some emerging data and information that indicates that children are less likely to get COVID in comparison to adults. The rate of infection does appear to increase with age. So what does that mean? It means that we see more cases in older kids than in younger kids. And I know that Dr. Avula just showed that COVID-19 in the state of Virginia in children makes up a small proportion of total cases. If we actually look across the entire United States, children under the age of 18 only make up about 2% of all of the COVID-19 cases. And interestingly enough, there was this really cool study that they did in Iceland where they tested the entire, or they were doing surveillance for the entire population. And children under 10 years of age were much less likely to be infected than those over 10 years of age. Next slide. Next slide. So there are studies that involve clusters, meaning that there is a cluster of cases, a cluster of people infected, that people have looked and done contact tracing and to determine how many people become positive from one person. This allows us to determine an attack rate, so how many people get the virus after coming into contact with someone. And it appears that children have a much lower attack rate than adults. Seems that they're much less likely to get the infection. And young children appear to be at least one-third or one-half less likely to acquire the infection. And on the right there, I'm just showing you an interesting study that they did in New York City where they looked at 15 different households, and they found again, that very young children were much less likely to have COVID-19. Next slide. So we do know that kids can get COVID-19. And so you're probably wondering, and you've probably seen lots of things on the news. So if they do get it, how do they do? Well, the good news is that most children with COVID-19 do very, very, very well. Some kids have no symptoms, or other kids have very, very mild symptoms, similar to other common coughs and colds. At VCU Children's Hospital, we've seen same thing, very, very few children that have actually been admitted to our hospital with COVID-19. And that's also been seen across the state and across the country, that kids are just much less likely to be hospitalized in comparison to adults. Some risk factors that different studies have found that lead to children being hospitalized would be very, very young children, so infants less than one, or children with heart and lung disease, or in some of our older children, we've seen that obesity or high weight essentially can play a role. So another good news for kids is that severe disease and death is extremely rare. And when we have seen that, these are in children with underlying comorbidities. And what I mean by that is that these children are very medically complex. These are kids that depend on ventilators or breathing tubes, or sometimes they have a breathing tube coming out of their neck tracheostomy. So these are kids that are very complicated children that have the more severe disease and death. And then I know that a lot of you and a lot of people were probably completely freaked out, very scared when you saw on the news all that information about the multi-system inflammatory syndrome in children. There was a lot of media on that. It's definitely something that is scary, but it is very, very rare, and there are treatments for it. And so most children that have presented with this do get better. And when I last looked at the Virginia Department of Health, they're tracking this, there's only really been a handful of cases identified in the state of Virginia. And there was a big study across the whole country that included, you know, the US intensive care units and Canada intensive care units as well. These are units that you go to if you're super, super sick. And what they found, that most intensive care units across the US reported zero children admitted during the study period. So really, the kids are not getting admitted to these units with COVID-19. Next slide. Some people, just to, you know, think about this in comparison to the seasonal flu, it's two very, very different things. But thus far, what we know is that the overall burden of COVID-19 infection in children remains relatively low when we compare it to seasonal flu. Now with flu, we have a vaccine, so sometimes it's a little bit different to compare. But in the year 2020, we've certainly had much more death from seasonal flu than from COVID-19. Next slide. And now those were just some of the risks we think about directly due to COVID-19. But then there's been a lot of concerns and a lot of data coming out specific to children, sort of after effects of COVID-19, or effects that they're, they're seeing in their day-to-day life because of the pandemic. So there's been documented reduction in children's mental and socioeconomic well-being from a continued isolation. And we see this most commonly in children with lower economic families, a lower income families. There is evidence that's emerging that suggested that there are increases in abuse and neglect. And we're seeing that more so in our younger children and again, in our lower income families. So the American Academy of Pediatrics, really, you know, they came out with a pretty strong statement recently, you know, talking about, you know, school and COVID-19 and providing some guidance. But they just said, you know, schools provide our children, adolescents with academic instruction, social, emotional skills, safety, reliable nutrition, physical speech and mental health therapy, and opportunities for physical activity, among other benefits. So just a couple key points when we're talking about risk to children. Children appear to be less likely to get COVID-19. They're much less likely to have severe disease and less likely to be hospitalized. For the most part, these kids are going to have no symptoms or very mild, do very, very well. And it appears that younger children in particular are less likely to transmit COVID. And I don't want to bore you guys, but I can't, one of the reasons why we think that young children are much less likely to get COVID is because they have less of the receptor that the virus likes to bind to. So as you get older, you have. I have to say, so next.
All right, guys. Hi, my name is Ramesh Wijesaria. A pleasure to be here, and thank you, Danny, for inviting me to participate in this. So as Danny said, I'm the division chair of general pediatrics. And I've been in the city of Richmond for, whoo, 17 years now, something like that. And my boys got to go to Chimborazo when Ms. Burke was there, and they're now at Franklin Military. And so it was really exciting to at least have the opportunity to participate in this because it has some real personal implications for me and my family and my children and their friends, and all of their teachers. So I'm going to jump in, because I think this is actually, the risk to teachers is, after you've heard Emily talk, the risk to teachers is actually where we need to focus and be thoughtful and careful when we're thinking about reopening schools or how we want to do that. So if you want to go to the next slide. So here's, here's the reality of COVID. The reality is that it's really the adult population, and specifically people over the age of 65, that are at greatest risk. And we've known this from the time we became aware of COVID in China, and the data has just continued to support that fact. The other aspect, or the other reality, is that chronic medical conditions in adults increase the likelihood of severe disease. These are the main chronic illnesses that have been shown to have a amplification effect on individuals, high blood pressure, obesity, cardiovascular disease, asthma. Most of these are indicators of hyperinflammatory states, which we think is what makes COVID, when it, when it gets into certain adults, the ones who have more severe illness. We think it's because they sort of have a hyperinflammatory response. So what we really need to think about, and what we spent a lot of time today and over the last week or so as we were preparing for this, we really need to think about our teachers and our staff at schools as we, as we come up with a plan. Because this is the population that we need to be most concerned about. I didn't put on here, but I think everyone is also aware that the African-American population specifically has been harder hit. And so in RPS, our staff has a higher proportion of African-Americans. And so we have to be thoughtful and careful, given that added reality. So there are a couple of key points, and I'm going to share the data on the next slide, but a couple of key points that the data has increasingly shown over the last three months. One is that it appears that kids don't seem to transmit to adults as much as adults transmit to adults. Part of what Emily shared, and then even part of what I'm sharing, this, this is not how a lot of viruses work. And so when we shut down schools at the beginning of this whole COVID crisis, we were all the scientists and physicians working on the, under the assumption that this functioned a lot like flu or other viruses like that, and that children would be a primary source of spread to one another and to adults. But as we've been able to gather data, that just does not seem to be the case. And so because of that, we really think across the world that minimizing adult-to-adult interaction is where we need to be focusing in all of our communities. I'm going to say this a little bit tongue-in-cheek. The data would suggest that we should have opened schools before we opened up bars. I will go on to the next, go out to the next slide. So this is the big question. Can kids give COVID-19 to adults? And if so, how, how likely is that to occur? We have some good data now. We're gathering data along the way across, sort of across the world. So it does seem that kids can give it to each other and to adults. But again, kids who, especially younger kids, less than 12 years of age, do not seem to transmit to each other or to adults, to their parents, to their teachers, et cetera. So there was an interesting study here on the right. You see the study that's quoted from Chicago. So this is one of the few studies we have so far where they actually looked at specific households where there were children. And they used contact tracing ideas to figure out that the children give it to the adults, or did the adults give it to the children within a home? And it was only 15 households, so the N is very small. But 73% of those cases, they determined that the adults gave it to the children as opposed to vice versa. There have been other studies that have looked at this across, across the world, and they continue to sort of support that finding. It seems much more common for adults to give it to children than vice versa. A lot of the data right now, and a lot of the articles that you guys have been reading about in Florida, where there are outbreaks and the daycare center outbreaks, most of the contact tracing data from that actually shows that the adults gave it to the children. Like the children got it from either their home or from the daycare worker, then vice versa. So it's just important, as we're looking at that data and the stories, that we understand which way the transmission is going. There's, there are some very important data sets within America that I, that I want to highlight here. So there's a Brown University data set where one, where an epidemiologist at Brown University is gathering data from daycare centers and schools across the country. And this right now, and this is an ongoing data set. So right now, it's 983 centers, about 27,000 students and about 9,500 staff. In that data set, 0.15% of students have tested positive, and only 1%. and only one percent of staff have tested positive. That data set does not include how many people ended up in the hospital, if any, or any mortality. It just is talking about percentage of like just incidents. The YMCA data, so this is a larger data set. And this was, so the YMCA, I think you guys are all aware, the YMCA took care of essential workers' children through this COVID crisis across the country. There were other daycare centers that also were involved with the YMCA. It was sort of the central one. And so they were taking care of children of a lot of hospital workers. Presumably, these were the people that were most likely to have been exposed to COVID themselves. And it was their children. So it was a, a hot, we would have assumed that these were the kids that should have gotten it. And if they got it, they should have been sharing it with each other and with their staff workers. I broke out New York City because we all know what happened in New York City. So that is like taking another cluster and diving even deeper, right? So New York City, which was ten thousand children and more than a hundred and seventy sites. The YMCA has no record of having more than one case at any given site during, during that. I think the last time I looked at this data was about two weeks ago. So that is, it's just important for us to know the data that we have. And that's pretty compelling data. A lot of us were not expecting that to be the case. I can tell you as a pediatrician on the front end of this, when I started, when this started, data started coming out, it did not, it was not what I was expecting. But it is what we have. And so we just want to make sure that everyone knows that and is aware of that as we're making decisions for our society and our community. Next slide.
Hey, everybody. Thank you so much for inviting me. I am not as special as these illustrious colleagues of mine. I am merely a middle-aged general pediatrician. I work with Ramesh at VCU. And, but I was a teacher in New York City before going to medical school. I have two school-aged boys who are six and eight years old. And I, I just don't envy you this decision. I think it's an incredibly hard and complicated time we are living for, living through, as everyone has, has discussed. But I think as we're making these tough choices, thinking about all of the people involved, we should be driven by evidence rather than fear. And so thinking about the context of this pandemic, if we're in a global pandemic and so we are never going to have a risk of zero until we get rid of the pandemic, until we're through it, right? Unfortunately, so we're really weighing risks and benefits and different levels of risk. But I think it's really important to think about all the evidence that was just presented. So if you want to go to the community slide next. What is the effect of opening or closing schools on risks of transmission in the community and the, the risk to the pandemic in general? And I think this is a really important question. This is why this needs to be a very local decision. Why we cannot have a nationwide decree about what will happen with schools in the fall. We have to think about each locality and the context of local transmission and, and risks during any given moment. It is very heartening to see that our percent positivity, our decreasing rates, our decreasing deaths in Richmond and in Virginia are creating a favorable context in terms of what's happening here in Richmond and what's happening in Virginia. So that is, is encouraging. And so we're not advocating in any way that we should be opening up schools in areas where we're having spiking new transmission, where we're having big new outbreaks. We are having a decline and so that's a really good thing. There's no way to look into the future, so we can look at models. And so one way that we've seen in modeling shows in a complex and dynamic situation, what is the effect of school closure compared to other social distancing measures in terms of controlling the pandemic and controlling infection? And that modeling for the best data that we have shows that about two to four percent can be attributed to schools versus all these other kinds of places that are open. So like, like Ramesh was saying, if we're thinking about opening, as a mom, as a pediatrician, as somebody who studies early childhood and education, I want to think about education as an essential service. And so when we're thinking about risks and benefits, you know, other places where there's congregate adults are much higher risk in terms of opening. When, when places like bars, restaurants, churches, large, you know, large gatherings of adults, those are going to cause much more increase of transmission in the community than, than groups of children. And then we also have evidence from other countries. So in places where they have been able to bring the pandemic and the community transmission down, opening schools did not cause an increase in those places of, of new transmissions, new outbreaks. They've looked at comparisons and cross countries that have decided to close schools or never closed schools and showed that there is not a major difference, there's not a way to measure any difference in the countries that never closed the schools compared to ones who did. So really, the, the, what we're seeing in schools reflects the community context. And so if our community context is favorable, then the decision to open, open schools again is more favorable. But schools do not seem to be a major driver of increased transmission or risk to the community. Right? So if we have an outbreak in the future, then we, you know, we may have to make a different decision. But the fact that things are trending down is really, really encouraging. And so overall, it seems like schools by themselves are not creating a major risk to the community and to the pandemic at all.
Okay, so we're going to kind of end with just a few thoughts on what it looks like to mitigate risk. You've probably heard me talk a lot or others talk a lot about kind of the four core things that need to come together to reduce spread of disease. And symptom screening is a big part of that. And so I mean, I think when we're thinking back to some of the data that Emily and Bergen and Ramesh presented, that, you know, in, in some of the settings, that is happening with a lot of intention by the school or childcare provider. And so being really thoughtful about how we set up systems to do symptom screening for all faculty and students as they come in every day. One of the things we've learned is that there are a number of other symptoms in addition to just the cough and shortness of breath and fever at the beginning of COVID that we have now added to our symptom screener. And it's going to require a pretty significant effort and on each individual person and family to do the screening and then to hold their kid out of school so they're not potentially putting others at risk. Distancing is also a really core component to minimizing spread. You all probably saw the guidance that came from BDH and VDOE on Monday, where they reiterated the CDC guidance that are, you know, the gold standard really is a six-foot of distance. But the World Health Organization and the AAP and BDH point to in places where that presents a really, you know, challenging logistical situation, three-foot distancing with a mask is okay. And so I think as you all are thinking through your different scenarios, know that that does open up a lot more possibilities to, to have kids and in the same space. Outside is better than inside. And so this may be an opportunity to, you know, think about how classes are transitioning and can we make more use of outdoor classrooms? That may not be possible with a lot of the footprints of the schools we have. But, but we do know that being outside is, is better for transmission than being inside. And as Bergen was just saying, I think that the real focus of any of the plans that you all put together really need to look at the potential for adult-to-adult interaction because that's where transmission is going to occur, much less likely to happen from kid to adult. Mask wearing, you know, continues to just be good, growing, solid evidence around the impact of wearing masks. So we would encourage that for everyone where possible. And then hand hygiene, you know, I think, you know, washing your hands, is it just a good practice? It's going to limit the, the, the contact side of the spread of this infection. And so I think there are things that you can incorporate into your processes where we teach kids now what that hand hygiene looks like as they prepare to potentially come back to school in the fall. And then we make sure that we have set up, you know, hand sanitizer and hand washing stations and have soap in the bathrooms and all of those good things. And make sure that it's just built into the, the rhythm of the day for kids. Environmental cleaning is an interesting one because as I was saying earlier, you know, at the beginning of this pandemic, we were very quick to shut down an office space or to, you know, to send everybody home and do a deep cleaning. And what we found is that, that contact transmission through fomites, which are particles that carry the virus. So that idea that I would cough on a doorknob, you would come behind me and touch that doorknob and then rub the virus from the doorknob into your eye. That whole process of events really only accounts for a very small percentage, maybe somewhere between five and 10% different studies have showed, of the total transmission of COVID. And so this idea of deep cleaning that, that we started with really isn't something that needs to continue. We do need to make sure that we're regularly wiping down high-contact services. So doorknobs or student desks, or if we're going to use cafeterias, wiping down the cafeteria table. But it doesn't need to be this, you know, massive event that we're shutting schools down for whenever there is a case. A really important component of our planning has to be in the, the bridge between the schools and health departments and clinical community. Because rapid reporting of symptoms, rapid testing and the ability for the health departments to respond and actually do isolation and quarantine recommendations and contact tracing is going to be vital to minimizing the spread. And then I'll head off to Bergen for this last part on structure.
Thank you, Dr. Avola. So I'm pulling this all together. I think we can all agree that, that school, however you decide to structure it, is not going to look the same as it did before COVID, that we are in a new world and we're going, we are going to have to do some things differently. No question about that. So one thing is thinking about keeping kids in kinds of bubbles or pods where they're interacting with that same group of children throughout the day and not mixing and changing classes and re-assorting all the time. Keeping that same group together is important. Thinking about having a virtual option for anyone who has risk conditions is uncomfortable. So that includes teachers and staff and students, you know, there's different situations. Any individual child, family and, and staff member has to have that option as well. Thinking about a targeted approach for, based on age. So really, younger children are going to be less affected by COVID, less likely to transmit COVID, but also less likely to be able to effectively do distance learning, right? The youngest child is not going to be able to access a curriculum virtually as well as a, a high school student. Speaking as a mother of a kindergartner who had, had to stop kindergarten in the middle of kindergarten year and he was just learning how to read and it was just so tragic because, you know, bless my husband's heart, he did homeschool, but he was just not as good of a kindergarten teacher as his kindergarten teacher, so. And then thinking about the, the different kinds of options that are available. And again, I don't envy you all this decision, but there is sort of some unintended consequences of having a hybrid model where you have children come in for only certain days of the week, especially those young kids who have to be in childcare or other situations the other days of the week. So say you have a classroom of fifteen children. If they go to fifteen different places on the days that they're not typically present in school, that increases the numbers of contacts that they are actually getting. So having those fifteen kids just with each other, five days a week, may be lower risk than having them there two days a week and then going to lots of different places. And then the childcare puts burden on the family and childcare system, but also in many cases, grandparents and folks who are at higher risk may be fall into that childcare role. So again, it, this has to be an individual, you know, family and, and school and district decision. But these are some of the options. And there are some great documents out there that go through some of this. In Illinois, the guidance that came through was very clear, had some of these options. They went through the, the various risks and benefits of the someone. So that was it for that. And then let Danny.
Yeah, thanks, Bergen. So we'll, um, we'll, we'll send this out. There's a list of resources that you can all look at. If there are more, more, you know, questions or kind of specific takes on the data that you want insight on, we're happy to provide that. I think here are the big takeaways, that we really want to be data-driven in our decision-making. And the data continues to come at a really rapid pace now. And so you all having that in front of you as you wade through the next week, few weeks of decision-making will be really important. You know, I think we've, we've shared the, the, the limited risk of kid-to-kid transmission and kid-to-adult transmission. And so any planning we do really needs to be looking at how to minimize adult-to-adult transmission. The evidence is much stronger for low transmission among young kids. And so that has some bearing on how you might offer, you know, in-person versus virtual differentially at the older grades versus the younger grades. And, and I think we always have to make these decisions, decisions in the context of what's happening. And so right now, as we look in Richmond and throughout the state, our, our rates of disease are really low. And, and if three months or four months from now, we see rates like we saw back in March and April and May, then we may have to, you know, obviously go in a different direction. So, you know, maybe I'll just close before whatever time you, you want to spend doing Q and A. You know, I, the, the most kind of sensitive and tender part of this conversation will be the engagement and trust building with the teachers. I saw the REA statement that came out a few hours ago. I've been hearing for weeks from my wife and her colleagues and her friends who teach and their concerns. And, and those are real and they're, they're valuable and they're important. And you all know that better than anyone. And so I think I just want to offer ourselves to you as the health department, as my colleagues here at VCU and anybody else that we can rally to support, to help you all through the, the provision of data, doing Q and A sessions and, and providing like good factual evidence to help people move, move along that decision-making process. We really want to be here in any way that we can for you. All right, questions?
Thank you. I, I need to be able to see this chat screen. Thank you. Okay. Because that's how I know who's got a question. Right now, I have a question and I don't see anybody else yet. My question is, in the post office and a couple of other places, I have seen door handles covered with something called nanoseptic, a continuously self-cleaning surface. Does that work?
Oh, I'm already muted. There are a bunch of different options out there. I don't know the specific one that you're talking about, Ms. Owen. But I do know that there have been just like new innovations in, you know, how do we limit the bio burden in different settings? So I think there are some things that work. I mean, in, in long-term care facilities, for example, we've introduced ultraviolet lights as a way to sterilize different types of personal protective equipment and increase their lifespan. So I can, I can try to look up that one that you're talking about. I don't know about it offhand, but I can circle back. We've got a whole team of folks that's constantly looking at all these new environmental innovations.
Well, I, I was not excited to go to the post office, but I had to do it. And so I just really was curious if this is a thing that, you know, you could put on a door and door bar or anything else and it would just keep it clean and we wouldn't have to wipe it down every fifteen minutes? That, that might be something that would be useful to know. So I invite you to go to your post office and see what you see. And now I see that Mr. Barlow, then Ms. Page, then Ms. Door, and then Ms. Burke have questions.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you very much to, to all of the esteemed doctors who've joined us for this conversation. We really appreciate the, the insight that you're, you're bringing here. I, I've got, the first question I want to dig into is, is related to our student population here in RPS. Of course, we have a substantially higher proportion of disadvantaged students, a higher proportion of black students, a higher proportion of Latino students than, than many school divisions. So we did see some data related to, to the percentage of young people in the Richmond area who have contracted COVID. So I'm curious to know if we have any breakdowns along those demographic lines. And then the other question I have is, it seems to me that most of the testing protocols that we've encountered in the community have largely been for folks who are already showing symptoms. So when we see that those percentages of young people who have COVID, are those based on any broad census data of mass testing related to young people? Or is that based on folks who have come forward largely, who are already showing symptoms? And then the last question, and I'll get out of your hair and maybe come back a little bit later, is related to the spread. I thought it was really helpful to to get some insights about the likelihood of spread from young people to adults in particular. But I am curious to to know a little bit more about, I guess I might have to take a look at those studies in particular. But I'm less inclined to believe that many young people are out and about potentially contracting this virus away from their families if schools are not open. So I'm curious to get a little bit more insight from you all about whether that has been taken into account when looking at transmission rates from from our children to adults? Because we may be looking at slightly different data and figures after schools do largely open.
Right? Is there someone who can answer that? Dr. Avila, you got thoughts on those?
Yeah, I was, I wanted to see if either Bergen or Emily wanted to answer that last question about, you know, the comparative kids when school's out versus when kids are in school? Do you want to talk just about like some of the school studies from other countries?
Yeah, I can I can go over that briefly. I think that's a really good point. I mean, again, how do we know what will happen when children do go back to school? But we have some evidence from group settings with children from this country in childcare that's remained open. So admittedly, those are younger children. And as we've said, they may have slightly lower risk of transmission. But in childcare centers that remained open throughout this pandemic, but that's the data that Dr. Ramesh reviewed, there was not a significant spike related to any of those settings. It was really, in general, rates of infection were lower than the community rates in those same communities. We have international data. So in Sweden, where schools never closed, compared to Finland, where schools shut down in mid-March, similar to when we did, and then has reopened. We have seen that there's not a difference in the numbers of cases in school-aged children between those two countries. So there is a difference between those two countries in adults. And we see that the other things, like we said, in terms of the modeling, that those group settings for adults are much higher risk. So that when we open up bars and churches and other places and have large gatherings, that potentially is much higher risk than having groups of students in schools in terms of the the community pandemic rate. So happy to share those specific data and studies with you if that would be helpful. Looking at transmission clusters around the world, only 3.8% actually involved any kind of in-school transmission. So really thinking about transmission happening in homes, people who are really closely in contact with each other and in adults-to-adult kinds of setting. So I'll let Dr. Avola talk about the other parts of your question.
Yeah, so on the issue of a racial breakdown of our local data, we, let me check with our data team. My suspicion is that the numbers are so low that we can't actually publicly post those, but but maybe not. So I will, I will see what we can do in terms of a breakdown. But I'm sure there's good data looking at racial stratification among kids at the state and national level. So I will follow up with you on that. And then the last question was, does the testing or do the test results really only reflect asymptomatic, or sorry, symptomatic people? Because we're not testing a lot of asymptomatic folks. I think that's likely because, you know, most families, you know, if their kid's not showing symptoms, they're not going to go to take them, get tested, unless they are part of a cluster or have some concern for an exposure. So I can just tell you from our anecdotal experience, having done community testing events about three times a week, we have 200, 250 people who are showing up three times a week to get testing, some of whom are kids, that sometimes a family is just concerned because they've been around someone who they thought was sick. So I don't have a good analysis on what portion of the kids who tested positive were actually symptomatic versus asymptomatic. But your guess is probably correct, that it skews heavily towards the symptomatic because that's who's going to get tested for the most part.
I can add a little bit to that question. At our hospital system, we test every single child regardless of symptoms if they're getting admitted to our hospital system and also prior to any procedure. And so when we look at the breakdown of the percent positive between asymptomatic and symptomatic, we have a much higher percent positivity in the symptomatic category. And in asymptomatic, and the children that are not having any symptoms, the likelihood that they have COVID is extremely low. Now, this is just a small subset and this is anecdotal, just in our hospital system. But it is not common for us to see children that don't have any symptoms that ultimately become positive. And again, we do test every single child on admission and prior to any surgical procedure.
Hey, Mr. Barlow, this is Ramesh. I just want to make sure when you asked the question about the transmission with adults, that we answered your question? Did we, were we getting at the answer to your question or?
Well, you know, I think that it's been addressed to some degree. There was talk about daycare facilities in the United States and other school systems in other countries. I'm not sure how analogous those are to an RPS opening at this point. My understanding with the YMCA, for example, is that the group settings were were smaller. And and I don't know how long exposure is in that type of setting versus a school setting, how many students may be in a YMCA facility broadly versus an RPS facility, things of that nature. So I think it's it's helpful context and it's data that I'd like to take a closer look at. But I do want to, I wish we had more apples-to-apples comparisons with other school districts. I also don't, I don't want our, I don't want our kids to become that data set that that are, that other localities are looking at and saying, maybe this wasn't a good idea. So that's something to keep in mind. But I am very conscious of following the data and not running completely on fear. But I do think that concern is certainly understandable at this point. And I think that we need to to continue to gauge how our families feel and how our teachers feel moving forward. So hopefully, through these continued conversations, we'll be able to do that.
Yeah, let me just say, share a couple of thoughts on that. So I would say the pediatric community, the medical community going into this, when this started, was assuming all the fears that the data has actually now shown. We probably, at least for kids, that we don't have to be. As we were looking at it and scrutinizing it, probably with leaning towards it's going to be a problem versus it's not. And when someone like the AP comes out or even me personally as a pediatrician, like it, the amount of data that I needed to, that I need to like be even like lean the other way is probably more than it should be because of sort of just who my patients and what my career is. There is, like, what is really fascinating to me is across the globe, no one is reporting schools or daycare centers as a problem. Like, literally, you can't. And then when you find the one or two anecdotes, or let's say even 10 anecdotes, they are outliers as opposed to like rules that seem to then follow even in that particular community. And so it's, I mean, again, I think we have to keep following the data. But it is amazing to me how strong the data is as we're sort of going through this four months and for children. So the amplification question, I think, is really important of schools and daycare. And that's been fascinating, that schools, which usually amplify contagious disease in any community, it just has not happened in the Netherlands, Finland, Denmark, et cetera, places where they've gone sort of back to school completely with the younger kids. So again, not apples-to-apples perfectly, but these are, these are just really interesting things that were not our hypothesis on the front end.
So, but would you contend that those, that those countries have have the virus under better control, generally speaking? And and I guess my other question is related to health conditions. I mean, I think spread in the United States has been pretty significant compared to some other countries that we're seeing, and a lot of that may have to do with pre-existing health conditions, the likelihood of Americans being overweight. And then, of course, when we're taking a look at the student population and the families that we're serving in particular, I mean, that as has been noted earlier, the data shows that that many of our students and families are at greater risk.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know the answers to the other countries as far as what the numbers, what percent positivity rates they were when they went back to school. So I do think that's a valid question to look at, trying to compare another level of comparison. I do think the New York City data here locally, we do know the rates were way higher than that and it didn't change within those communities. It didn't amplify the effect. So. But I, yes, we have to very, very, very carefully and thoughtfully, given our particular, the particularities of the Richmond community, make our decisions and constantly be reevaluating as as we're going.
Thank you so much. Ms. Page, then Ms. Door, Ms. Burke, Mr. Young, and Ms. Gibson.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Dr. Avila. This information is very appreciative. I have a couple of questions. My first question, the data. Because we know data has to be our driving force for our decision-making. But how often do you suggest that we review the data? And what is the recommended threshold that would tell us you all need, you know, pause and rethink the plan for our children and our staff? So I ask you that question first.
Yeah, I mean, I think there probably would be a weekly review of what's happening among the RPS population. And then incorporated into that would be a weekly review of what's happening in Richmond and the region. And and, you know, I think the RPS leadership team would would just have that as part of their their regular cabinet meetings where they're looking at the state of disease and and then having to make decisions based on, you know, how many teachers are we having to hold out for quarantine? Or how many students are getting diagnosed and having to stay home? I don't know that there's a clear answer because there could be scenarios where it's unlikely. But there could be scenarios where you have one school that has significant impact, but you wouldn't, wouldn't shut down the entire system for that, right? So I think it's, there's a lot more nuance to the answer. But I do think a weekly review of data would be a good practice to build. And then as it relates to thresholds, you know, what we've used at the state level is that 10% positivity as a goal to, you know, to be able to move away from some of the more significant community mitigation efforts. So going from phase one to phase two, phase two to phase three, where we were opening up restaurants and opening up non-essential business, that percent positivity was one of the key factors we were looking at. So that's one example of a threshold I would use. I, I think, you know, the other things that we were using at the state level were things like hospitalization rates, case rates, and death counts. And if, and we could, we could figure out how to try to proxy that for the RPS population.
Okay, thank you. Then my next question. Is there data comparison for another school district that has, you know, that has similar demographics to Richmond? You know, that have, they reopen and... So do we have a comparison, similar demographics? Because we're talking about Finland and Sweden. That is not a comparison to Richmond. So is there any, any way that we can look at the data in comparison? Do apples to apples? Because right now, we're talking apples to oranges.
Right. And I think what's hard is that so much of our country just shut down. So we'll keep looking for those data points. I think that in my reading, I saw something about Colorado. But again, I don't know that it's going to be a very good comparison in terms of race and socioeconomics. But I imagine there are, you know, case studies in France and Germany. There's been a lot published about those two countries. Again, it's, it's hard to know what would be like a perfect demographic comparison. But I think there are some that probably get closer than than you'd think.
Okay, and then my last question for right now. We've been hearing, there's been a lot of rhetoric about CDC providing relaxed guidelines to, you know, regarding schools reopening. So how do we know the information that we are receiving is not based on the relaxed guidelines? Or how do we know what we don't know?
Yeah, it's a tough, it's a tough question. I mean, I think it's why, why, you know, the the response to COVID has been so seemingly, you know, back and forth over the past four months because we've had to make a lot of decisions without good data or good knowledge. And as each month has gone by and we have more information, we're able to make slightly better decisions. And I think, you know, I think Virginia as a whole has been a really good example of using the limited information we've had to make thoughtful and conservative recommendations in terms of, you know, our phase process, the way that we've planned out the opening of businesses, the mandate of masks, the stay-at-home requirements. So I, you know, the the question specifically about relaxed guidelines from CDC, I mean, I think what they were really looking to do was figure out how do they use the existing evidence and provide the best advice possible? And so that you don't have to go by that. I would say that the VDH and VDOE is kind of an adaptation of that. You know, it's not, it's not exactly what the CDC is saying. But ultimately, you as the board and the RPS leadership team will have to figure out how does that actually translate to our policies and procedures and operations? And so I think that, like, the devil's in the details, right? Like, the way that we actually think about what we do with teachers who have underlying conditions and really just want to be virtual and what we do for other teachers, like that, there's, there's a huge opportunity to kind of do this well and it's going to take a lot of thoughtfulness and work. But again, we want to, we want to be here for you through that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Page, Ms. Door, then Ms. Burke, Mr. Young, and Ms. Gibson.
Thanks. And thank you all for joining us tonight. I appreciate the time that you are giving to us. I have four questions, so I'll, I'll speak and then let you guys answer. They're, they're not all hard. One, we haven't talked about HVAC. And I'm wondering, especially with the quality and the age of our buildings and the quality of our HVAC systems, what risk that imposes to our staff and children? The second is sort of, and this might be more for the administration and for a later conversation. But I am curious about, like, what is the process for when someone does get sick? I think it's, if we were to reopen, I think it's inevitable that people will get sick. And then are we just going to have to shut down the school anyways and quarantine for 14 days? And are we just going to be in this never-ending cycle of opening, shutting down for 14 days, opening, shutting down for 14 days? Three, kind of getting to what some of my other colleagues have said. Given that we have opened prioritized opening bars before schools, that means that our community infection rates are higher than what we're seeing across the world. And so, you know, what, I know you sort of have answered it, but it just does feel like the US is a slightly different beast. And especially now that things are opening up, what, you know, what additional risks do we need to be considering? And then finally, I appreciate the offer to remain in touch with us and with the community. I think that would be extremely valuable. And what, given that you all, except for Dr. Vula, have, you know, tremendous experience on the pediatric side, but that it seems like we really need to be focusing the risk on the staff side, who else needs to be at the table to make sure that we're representing that perspective?
Oh, no, I thought Ramesh was going to respond. Okay, the HVAC issue, that will take more conversation just because I I don't have a good enough sense of like what the infrastructural issues are with schools. I mean, I think that what what planes, for example, and and sort of facilities are thinking about, you know, how do we incorporate HEPA filters to just try to filter out particulate matter? I don't know that there's a lot of good evidence around it. I mean, I I do know basically that more ventilation is better, right? So this idea, because so much of COVID transmission is through the inhalation of respiratory droplets, that mask wearing is crucial and and will help stop a lot of transmission. But, you know, the the same reason that outside is better than inside, because when you've got air flows that are that are taking that are sort of diluting the respiratory droplets, that can be helpful in mitigating some of that risk. And so one of the things the CDC has said is that if you can, you know, increase air ventilation by opening a door or windows, that will help. Now, that's challenging, given the allergy and asthma side of this in Richmond in particular. So we'd we'd have to kind of think through those scenarios. So I I don't know specifically about the HVAC conundrum, and if there are things that we can that would even make a difference to outfit the existing HVAC systems that I'm not sure if that would help or not. Additional risks given the, and Liz, you're talking specifically just about the trends in the US and and what additional risk that presents?
I can jump in here, Danny, with my thoughts. So I think the big question here with schools and children in general is, do children or schools amplify, make worse whatever is happening in the community? So we know, so because because we know it's not that dangerous to kids based on the data that Emily presented. The question is, while we still need to worry about our kids, it just the they just don't get that sick. It was, again, there will be outliers, and so that will not be fun, but they just don't get that sick generally. So then the question is, do they make it worse for the community? And everything we have so far, which is a good bit of data now, suggests that schools or daycare centers or whatever do not amplify, they don't cause the spread to become worse. Now, at some point, we may make a decision if the rates go up high, higher to 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 turn course from whatever we are, whatever it is that you guys decide to do. But it would actually be more to protect the the teachers from each other than it would be to protect the kids from the teachers or the teachers from the kids based on the data that we have. And that's, I mean, that that data just is really, really strong as far as who's really who's really the most contagious and and like dangerous is it's us as adults, and the older you get, the more dangerous you get to one another.
Yeah, so if I were to say anything about, it's really about changed adult behavior, right? It's it's more commitment to symptom screening and minimizing travel and and I mean, all the things we should be doing anyway. So I I don't, I don't know that that there's. Yeah, I mean, I I think I think it just ramps up the importance of our school staff doing those four basic things well.
I had the question about process for when someone gets sick.
You want to me or to Jason?
I just, you know, one of my concerns is that, you know, if if a teacher, for example, gets sick or a child gets sick in a classroom, then would we shut down the, would it be your counsel that we shut down the entire school? Or would it be your counsel that we shut down the class? And, you know, sort of what does that look like?
Yeah, I mean, I I think this is kind of to my earlier comments about how how our reaction was from an environmental standpoint at the beginning of the pandemic now. We would come in and basically examine the situation and determine who would qualify as a close contact. And, you know, I think in in the classes that have smaller groups or or sorry, younger kids, I think most of those kids are gonna are gonna qualify as as close contacts epidemiologically, we use six feet for greater than 15 minutes. So let's say a teacher tests positive, depending on when he or she developed symptoms and tested positive, we would then look at, you know, were they in the classroom 48 hours prior to the development of symptoms? And then determine, do we need to actually quarantine that entire classroom? And there there are different approaches we can take because they've all already been exposed at that point. And so, for example, if we are doing the pod or bubbling system, we may not actually have to do anything different, right? We may, we may be able to just keep that group of kids together. But I would not say that there will be many scenarios where we have to shut down entire classes or schools for, you know, for either because of spread or because of cleaning. I think in most scenarios, we'll be able to define a ring of close contacts, and obviously, this will be easier at the older age range. And then make isolation and quarantine recommendations for a smaller group. It will mean that we'll need to start thinking about a subpool, right? Because there are going to be more situations where people are sick or have had potential exposures and are quarantined. And so we've got to build our our base of substitute teachers who can come in and fill those needs.
I want to share just one other thought about adult to adult transmission. Liz, it sort of gets to your question, but I think it gets to the teacher concern. So I think we have some really good data in the healthcare system for how to minimize spread. And it is not like what we are doing at VCU is not is very replicable in the school environment. It is really good hand hygiene in my clinics where I have seen multiple patients now with COVID, a really good mask wearing. Every time I touch something, I'm I there are dispensers for hand hygiene. And that has worked. There has not been clusters of VCU or really at any hospital for for doctor to doctor transmission. There are stories, obviously, of people getting it from patients, and there probably have been some transmissions from doctors to doctors or nurses to doctors, but it isn't. Those would be reportable. They're so they're so rare. And we are working every day with and probably a really, really, really high-risk environment when it comes to COVID. So it's just just from an adult to adult, it is, we can do it. And we can do it without having like specialized equipment necessarily. We just regular good hand hygiene and mask wearing. And we've had probably within my division, just to give you guys, just to make it concrete, we probably have like, I don't know, somewhere between five to 10 people out of about 300 that are within pediatrics, and there has not been any cluster effect. And they probably were transmitting virus before they've got their symptoms. And we didn't get any like significant clusters anywhere yet. I don't know what our hospital shows, but that's within pediatrics.
Okay, thank you.
And just my last question was, thank you all, was just who else should be at the table? Is there other voices that are missing, especially given the concern on the staff and the diet?
You know, I think Emily had to jump off. She from at a VCU level, she would know who on the adult side from both infectious disease and or epidemiology would be available and make the most sense. And I'm sure we can grab someone and get them on the team.
Yeah, Gonzala Bearman is someone who immediately comes to mind. He's the chair of infectious disease at VCU. But he and I and a whole host of others have have had many conversations about the undergraduate campus of VCU and setting up the right policies, practices, scenarios at the undergrad site. So he would be one, but I think we could tap the the chief medical officers of the other health systems and think about who's been thinking about this from a facility transmission standpoint. So we'd be happy to to think more about that with you, Liz.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you. And now, Ms. Burke, and then Mr. Young, Ms. Gibson, Mr. Barlow.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am very proud of the 7th District tonight, all right? The experts are here. Thank you so very much. Your information, Dr. Vula, Dr. Ramesh, all of you, I'm very well done, and thank you so very much. Number one, I appreciate your being parents within our system because surely the the decisions and the information you're bringing to us, it will affect your children and your families as well. So thank you so very much because we all want to have in place what we want for our own children. That's most important. I have three questions. I did, as Ms. Door just stated, thank you so much for continuing to be with us in a supportive role because we will need your guidance, I'm sure, as we move forward. I too, as Ms. Door asked, we talked about the adult to adult. Our teachers are resilient, they persevere, they have so much to do. Our crew chiefs, our bus drivers, cafeteria persons, principals, the whole counselors, the whole nine yards. I'm thinking, number one, yes, we will have to have a relationship in place, whereas the teachers will trust, the parents and children will trust the teachers to make the best decision. But we do need to, first of all, take care of our teachers and those persons that are working with the children as well. Because I'm hearing from especially those that have younger children at home or are taking care of older adults in the home. They are, they're scared. I also think in terms of the emotional piece. So I'd like to know, I have about four questions. Number one, in terms of who we would need to have on staff in addition to that one school nurse, is there anyone else that you would suggest that we would have on staff to address the the COVID-19 situation, just to be there from day to day? Number two, if we are in a position as a school system or as a board to decide upon providing PPE kits for for children, what would you suggest would be in the kits? And also, I have a question about hand sanitizers, because I heard on the news, I believe that there's one type of hand sanitizer that is detrimental. So what what would you suggest as a as what should we look for even in our homes, in our communities, as we pick up hand sanitizer? So that's that's my first two questions. Number one, how as Ms. Door asks as well, the to have, we're addressing children, the younger children. We haven't said much about children 12 and over. I like the idea of the outdoor learning. That's perfect. However, there are some communities that it would be friendlier and easier to do than others. So I'm all over the place. So number one, PPE kits, what would you suggest? Number two, hand sanitizer, what what would you suggest? Number three, the adult piece before coming back, however, we oppose whatever's going to take place, what should be in place for our our faculty and staff? And number four, blood types. It was on the news yesterday regarding if you are blood type O, now 10, you won't get COVID. Is that, is that true? I appreciate yours expertise. And then, number five, and this is it. Liz asked this as well. So if a child comes to school or an adult coughing or sneezing, and the child will state, oh, I have allergies. Every time I cough or sneeze, I'm like, because I'm out often, but I do wear my mask and I wash my hands, but I still think that until it passes. Is there, is it a poss, who can test people? Is it only medical doctors? I mean, can we have tests in our schools to do that on the on the spot? Or is that not equitable? Because otherwise, I'm afraid the children, I'm thinking about attendance, children as well as adults may be home for 10, 12, 14 days thinking they have something and they don't. So, you know, oftentimes, you all, you all know this as doctors, we can ask that children go to the doctor, they may go within a certain period, it may not. So is it possible to have testing kits in school? Or is that, is that legal? Thank you.
They're going to, Ramesh, do you want to take any of those before I jump in?
I can give my thoughts on a couple of those. Thank you, Ms. Burke.
Thank you.
I think as far as you're, you had a specific question around the need for additional staff, given the unique nature of COVID. I don't, my immediate response, without having thought through it that much, is I don't think you need additional staff. What you do need is a clear process for what happens when someone who meets certain criteria comes to a teacher or a school nurse. Because they need, anyone who meets that criteria needs to go leave the school to go get whatever extra care and or testing they need. Related to that, I don't think the testing, but Danny would have a better idea. I imagine right now, we're still in a situation where we don't have as many tests as we wish we did. And so there needs to be a little bit, there continues to need to be a filter about who who gets tests and how that and and it is doing the test has to be done a very specific way in order to get an accurate result. And so, yeah, I imagine right now that we would not be able to have onsite testing or in a in a plausible way. The testing takes anywhere from three to five days. So if you were tested, if you were deemed that you needed to get a test, it wouldn't be that you would need to be out 14 days. If you tested positive, you might, or you would. But if you test negative, it would be somewhere between two to five days, depending how long it took to come back, and then you could go back to school. I do think your point about, hey, there's going to be other reasons people are coughing and sneezing, whether that's other viruses or allergies, and that's going to be, there are going to be a lot of people who get days off, whether it's two days to five days, because it seems like they might they they qualify for getting tested, and they get tested, and then they end up being negative, and we are going to have to be dealing with that. That's my, those are my answers that I have off the top of my head, Ms. Burke.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, about PPE.
Yes.
Yeah, I, you know, other than experts, correct me if I'm wrong, but I would say masks and hand sanitizer are your most important safety measures. And a mask loses some effectiveness if you're touching your face all the time, or if you're reusing the same mask again and again, day after day. And so I think a mask would be good if it were washable. You could have a mask to use, like, say, different masks on different days and and wash them. That's what we're doing at the hospital. We have cloth masks. We get one new one each day, and they get washed. So I don't know how feasible that is, if families can do that, or if there's some process that where the schools can help do that. But and then hand sanitizer, I have not heard about that chemical agent that's dangerous in hand sanitizer, but just plain alcohol-based hand sanitizer is safe and effective. It has to be a high concentration of alcohol, but the alcohol kills the virus.
Thank you.
I think the busy report was that there there are new batches of hand sanitizer that have methanol in them as opposed
Yes.
And so, yeah, it it seems like we should avoid hand sanitizer with anything that's not ethanol-based, and 70% ethanol or greater. So those are the guidelines for hand sanitizer, and they're pretty clearly spelled out in both the EPA and CDC. I think Bergen nailed it with PPE, more staff, you know, I'm always going to advocate for a nurse in every school. I think that's really important to have somebody who's there, and I know RPS has been building in that direction. I also think the facilities that have done the best in response are facilities that have a point person or a team of people who is charged with like the the procedures, the response, and the protocols on on mitigation. So, you know, if every school has a team of three folks, let's say, that includes a school nurse and one of the administrators, that is is one of the recipes for success, somebody who's really paying attention to what's our screening protocol? How, what's our connection with the health department as soon as we suspect somebody who's symptomatic? How do we mark out our classrooms or mark out our hallways to minimize the kid to kid or adult to adult interaction in those spaces? So having a committed safety officer for each building would be valuable. The blood type question, since April, there have been this kind of series of studies that have shown that the O blood type may actually be protective against COVID. And and so, yeah, there have been a number of studies that continue And, and so, yeah, there have been a, a number of studies that continue to reiterate that. So I think, I think there must be something to it. So if you're O blood type, good on you. And then the, the symptom testing in schools. So I, this is going to be the, a really challenging thing because all of us know, especially at the elementary level, that kids are just coffee and snotty all through allergy season, all through cold and flu season. So we are going to have to find ways to expedite testing for, for those kids. Testing is getting better all the time. I mean, I think it's still a challenge for private pediatric officers or, or health system PCPs, but CVS is doing testing seven days a week.
Really?
Yeah. So, and you can go and, and they're saying that whether you're insured or uninsured, no out-of-pocket cost.
Yeah.
So I, I, yeah, we're, we're testing that, but they're, they're up and running all over the Richmond region. A, a couple of other retail drugstores are bringing more testing and I'm going to stand that up. That announcement will probably be made in the next few days. So there are many, many more options. I think the health department is going to continue to offer a community-based testing about three times a week. We've been on a circuit through some of our low-income communities throughout the city. Typically at the grocery store near Withem and between Withem and Fairfield, we do one in Southwood basically every other week where it diversity. So we, we do kind of a, a network of six or seven sites. So I think bringing testing into schools might be challenging unless the school nurses were willing to get trained and take that on. And then we could talk about how do we source test kits and just build the pathway. I think it could be possible that they could have a, a handful of test kits on hand that could then be processed through the state lab. So I'd be, I'd be happy to think through that as.
Thank you.
Kind of make plans, yeah.
All right. Thank you so much. Thank you all.
Okay. Mr. Young and then Ms. Gibson and Mr. Barlow.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And first I just want to begin by conveying like my, my gratitude to Danny and the team for, for first and foremost, everything that you've done the last several months. You've been in front lines and, and addressing this, this pandemic. So thank you, thank you for what you have done and thank you for this evening. My question pertains to mental health and a recurring theme that, that has been shared with me over and over again relates to mental health for our young people and often what, what isolation or something akin to isolation has, has meant for, for our young people. Just wanted to inquire if, if someone could address that and specifically if, if you have either anecdotally or if you have any evidence to speak to those concerns and if, and if, if we should, we should be particularly concerned about that recurring theme as we, as we resume school in, in some fashion. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Who wants to take on mental health here?
I was hoping Bergen would jump in.
I can jump, I, I'll try, I'll do my best. I, so I'm an early childhood person, but actually we, so I am a researcher and we are right now writing a supplement to our research study that's related to early childhood development, but we're really trying to look at the effects of the COVID pandemic and the pandemic response on parents' mental health and, and other kinds of socioeconomic stressors that people are experiencing. And so there, there has been an increase in depression and anxiety among adults in this country because of the pandemic and certainly children who are living with those adults are exposed to those mental health issues and are experiencing, also experiencing anxiety. I don't know the epidemiology in terms of the rates in children, but I think we don't know because we've been shut down and there's been not only this increased stress, but also decreased access to supportive services, including supportive services in schools. And so I think that thinking about the, the risks and the benefits and the harms, I mean, one thing to consider is the risk of, to children and families of remaining isolated and not having the supportive relationships that they have with, with teachers and with other students and with other folks in schools. And I think that that's real and it's important to think about that. That's not as maybe urgent or as scary, so we don't react as quickly, right? Because it's not about immediate death, right? But it's something that could have very important long-term consequences. We also know that the, the educational side is, is real and I'm no longer an educator, but I think that the relationship between health and education is really key. And so, you know, education is a really important determinant of health long-term for, for young people. So, so I think, yeah, you, you as schools and as a school district can play a really important role in both the prevention and early identification of mental health, important mental health conditions and trauma and, and not having the supportive resources is really important.
Thank you.
Okay.
One thing I got to add. Sorry, my phone a friend policy advisor is reminding me that there is one large United Kingdom study, and I'll add that, I'll add that to the resource list, but it basically showed significant reductions in unhappiness and anxiety, sorry, increases in unhappiness and anxiety in kids 10 and under from school closure in the United Kingdom. So I think that's exactly what Bergen is talking about. I also think that you sort of, in another facets of, of mental health, the, the concern for child abuse and, and domestic violence has certainly arisen as people have been stuck at home and, and particularly in these situations where we've tried to either, you know, have, schools have been closed or we've tried to do mostly virtual, kids are not having the opportunity to, you know, interact and build those healthy relationships with other adults. And that's actually having an impact on the, the reports of potential abuse. And so there's a couple of case studies that show that while child abuse calls to CPS are down because teachers are actually the biggest drivers of, of child abuse complaints, the, the percentage of people who show up to emergency rooms with more severe injuries has increased in, in certain places. And DC Children's was one of those places, Nashville, and there's one other, I can't remember where exactly, but, and, and I can, I can send that to you as well. But this idea that child abuse and neglect is going unnoticed because of the, the lack of face-to-face interaction with teachers, guidance counselors, social workers, that is such a vital, you know, part of, of school life for kids.
And that, that data is also replicated here in Richmond with the child protective team that they are also seeing the same realities.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Gibson, then Mr. Barlow, then Ms. Page.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I want to motion that we, we amend our agenda. I, this is obviously an important conversation. However, we are an hour and 40 minutes into this meeting and, and I think we, you know, we've been talking about who else do we need to have at the table and, and I would assert that we need to have teachers at the table, we need to have parents at the table, and the way they get to the table at this point is through those public comments. And so, so I would like to motion that we move, that we, we transition into the, the rest of our agenda for the evening and move to bring public information. Next, I think it's critical that we hear from folks prior to discussing the recommended school rezoning scenarios. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Wilson, did you get that?
I did. I believe she's asking to have public information prior to 2.02, which is the school reopening scenarios.
That is the motion. Is there a second?
I can't.
I'm sorry. Who was that? Who was the second?
Cosby.
Ms. Cosby, okay. So it's been moved and seconded to amend the agenda to move public information comments prior to discuss recommended school reopening scenarios. I'm, I'm sorry for our medical people that we haven't gotten to all your questions, but let's try and quickly take care of this. So Ms. Wilson, can we?
Is there any discussion? No discussion?
Ms. Dora, is your question about this motion?
Yeah. Just a point of clarification, it looked like there were like three or four board members that had follow-up questions. Would the motion makers permit those four questions to be asked and then we can move forward or is the motion to end this conversation right now?
My motion, my motion is to, is that we move to the next part of the discussion.
Now?
Yes.
And cut off our discussion with the doctors?
I mean, I believe that Mr. Barlow is the, the only person who's requested to speak again.
And Paige also.
Yes. I, I think that, I, I mean, I really think that it's critical, we can certainly ask follow-up questions to the team and if they're able to stay, you know, or perhaps it would be great if they could rejoin us while the administration makes their presentation specific to the various reopening plans. If there are some health-related questions, I think that would be particularly helpful. But I also think it's critical that, that we allow the public comment to happen, particularly because we did not have public comment at our last meeting. And if it is at all possible, I think we should try, as we promised to do, to read that public comment in, in today's meeting.
Okay. So she does want to cut off our discussion. So let's go ahead and have the vote.
Well, Madam Chair, I do think that this may call for discussion in light of that clarification.
Okay. So you want to discuss the motion?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Barlow?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd, I'd be more than happy to move public comment to directly after this agenda item, but I do think that while we have some of our experts here, if we can ask a few more questions, I, I think that may go a long way to the understanding. But I certainly do agree that it would be good to hear public comment before we discuss the reopening scenario.
Okay. But the motion now is to cease our conversation with the medical people.
Duly noted, Madam Chair, and that's why I'm asking Ms. Gibson if she would amend her motion to allow for a few more questions before we move into public comment.
So I will amend the motion that we have 10 more minutes of discussion and then move into public comment.
So Ms. Cosby, do you accept the amendment to limit our questions and discussion with the medical people to 10 minutes?
Okay.
All right. So.
Madam Chair, I have a comment.
Okay.
Going to discussion.
Okay.
Um, I'm not saying that we need to eliminate public comments. I fully support that, but the information that we are receiving now, it is so critical to our decision-making regarding our children and our families and our staff. And to put a limit on this discussion, I find it very egregious and as far as fulfilling our responsibility and, I mean, we have to be able to make the best decision based on information that we have and we have the experts here and I want to hear from them.
Okay. Is there any other discussion on this motion? Okay. Then let's, let's have the vote on the motion, Ms. Wilson.
Ms. Dora?
No.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
No.
Ms. Cosby?
No.
Ms. Page?
No.
Ms. Burke?
No.
And Ms. Owen?
No.
Motion fails.
All right. Then I'm trying to figure out, so Ms. Barlow, do you have a comment or a question for our medical team at this time?
I do indeed. Thank you, Madam Chair. So just a few questions and I'll try to be brief here. One is related to long-term impacts, particularly when it comes to respiratory, heart and neurological conditions. I seem to hear more and more that we're learning more about the longer-term impacts of COVID on, on folks who've experienced it and of course, understanding that we haven't, we haven't had that lengthy a period since COVID infection started occurring. I'm curious to hear a little bit more about early thoughts on that. And then the next piece is related to the, the three-foot guidance. I was pretty surprised to see that updated guidance. I, I understand that we're wrestling with a really challenging situation, but trying to bring our students back and that may make it more feasible to, to do so in a, in a large sense. But Dr. Avula, you mentioned that, that this, the three-foot guidance is largely for situations where it's deemed necessary. It's not really a best practice. And I think it, it's well-understood in RPS that we do have significant, have had significant HVAC problems. We've had mold issues in our schools. We do have a lot of facilities challenges. So I'm curious to, I get a little bit more feedback from you about whether you think three-foot guidance, three-foot distancing guidance is, is safe for our students in RPS. And then the last thing, and I guess we can talk about this probably later on in the discussion, is related to how we communicate with families in the event of a test positive given privacy regulations.
Okay. So I'll, I'll talk about the three versus six foot. So I wouldn't say that three-foot is not best practice because I, the World Health Organization has been using one meter as its standard, you know, from kind of May on. So I think for most of the world, they're, they're using three-foot as their standard. The CDC has a slightly more conservative six foot. I, I think it is important, and I think Emily made the, the point earlier, that any of these things by themselves is not going to work, right? And so I think if we are looking at three-foot with masks and we also have a really good screening protocol in place and we've got hand washing set up and kids are, you know, doing a, a fairly good job of wearing masks, I think you have a fairly low-risk scenario there. But, you know, as, as one or two of those pieces falls out, obviously the risk increases. And so I think one of the brass tacks conversation you'll have to have in planning is how realistically can we maintain kind of the four legs of the stool to, to really optimize outcomes for those kids? So I'm really comfortable with a three-foot and a mask, particularly in the context of those other, in the context of those other things being the case. Ramesh, do you want to speak to long-term impacts at all?
Yeah. I think, well, to just add on to what Danny said, Scott, the YMCA and the New York City Daycare Centers during the worst of their situation used like an arm plane rule with their kids, which, and they, that's what, that was what they were practicing. I would just add to that YMCA cluster in New York City, I think there is a lot to learn about how we want to then implement because they were somewhat, they were successful and it was, it's as close to apples to apples as we have when we look at situations across the world. The long-term data, so all I know, and I am a pediatrician, not an adult doctor, but my understanding of the adult literature on the long-term consequences really is about the, the people who end up being on ventilators and have significant lung trauma. And this is true for any disease that leads you to have that, like that much severity of illness. And we do know that when people get that sick and they need to be on ventilators, there is trauma done to the lungs that has long, like it's not just acute, but has long-term impact. I do not know, and there may be information out there, Scott. but my understanding of the adult literature on the long-term consequences really is about the, the people who end up being on ventilators and have significant lung trauma. And this is true for any disease that leads you to have that, like that much severity of illness. And we do know that when people get that sick and they need to be on ventilators, there is trauma done to the lungs that has long, like, it's not just acute, but has a long-term impact. I do not know, and there may be information out there, Scott, I do not know of like, hey, if you have a relatively mild case or in a symptomatic case, that there is potential long-term damage done to the body or to the lungs specifically, but.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Paige, did you have other questions for our medical people?
Yes, Madam Chair. On something that you said that kind of triggered another question. So as far as, and this may be an offline question, I'm not sure, but community testing, so I heard you said, community testing in Southwood. Are there any plans to implement additional community testing in the South Side? Because South Side is so, is such a large area. And we have a lot of children and families in the other end of the South Side. So I would like to know, what, what is the likelihood of that happening? Because this is an opportunity for our children and families to be tested, you know, everywhere.
Yeah, we're, we're really, I mean, we, we, you know, every community testing event takes just a certain amount of planning and preparation and figuring out, you know, what's the flow going to look like? How do you make sure that people can stand apart in line and aren't exposing each other? But, so we have, you know, six to seven locations that we do a regular rotation where we've worked all of that out on. But we also add new locations all the time. For example, I think this week, maybe even today, we were in Fulton. We will be next week or the week after, we'll be in Randolph. So I think as community residents and community leaders ask for testing and find that there are gaps in their neighborhoods, we absolutely are happy to work with communities to set up testing in different sites.
So I'm going to provide you two communities. Will and Crossing, I know is probably approximately, maybe over 400 children in that, that live in that community, Hillside Court. We have a large number of children, children and families in those areas. And so that's why I'm asking the question. We need to go further in the South Side to really have an impact to support our families in the South Side.
Yep, well, I've written this now, and we'll see if there are community partners that we can connect to help get the word out. Because I think, you know, a, a lot of the success of our community testing events has been having folks on the ground who have a relationship with those communities. And so, and we actually, you know, we have a satellite site in Hillside. We have a community health worker in Hillside. So that would be pretty easy for us to pull off, so happy to.
And we can talk addition, further offline.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Paige. Ms. Dorr?
A quick clarifying question on the, the age range cutoff for sort of lowest transmission risk. Is it zero to 10? Is that the age cohort? And then it starts to increase in risk, 11 to 20?
Sorry, I just want to make sure I wasn't muted. Zero to 10 seems to be, zero to 12 actually seems to be its own subset of really low. And then it doesn't increase like all of a sudden, but there is a sort of upward slant from there. So a 15-year-old is less likely than a 25-year-old. A 25-year-old is less likely than a 35-year-old and so on. But zero to 12 seems to be in its own low-risk category, and then it starts trending up.
Thank you.
Certainly in like adolescent group homes, we have seen some cases where there have been some outbreaks. So that's, you know, the 13 and older.
Okay. All right, Ms. Burke, you have a question?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. Just for clarification purposes regarding the age. I'm hearing that it may be a better situation for elementary children to return in small groups or whatever, as opposed to middle and high. Is, is, am I interpreting that correctly? I can see the small groups of, of, I can't see children kindergarten and pre-kindergarten keeping facial masks on all day. You know, that's, that's, and breathing in that same air. I know what, but if you're going to be at school for six hours a day, that's, that's a lot. That's a lot. But I do like the idea of being separate, which is going to be very hard as well. But a lot of great teaching may take place because it's small groups, which is something that we've been asking for, however, not under these circumstances. So my question is, am I hearing from our, our experts? That how would you suggest, would you be so kind as to suggest how we would put a plan in place? Are you suggesting elementary only, or virtual for middle and high? Or are you suggesting that every other day, which technically you aren't? Because I'm hearing on the days that we're off, children have the opportunity to go to 16 different places, I think is about the urgent stated. So what, what would you suggest as our takeoff practice? If we get to that point of, of returning to school or virtual, either one? I'd like to hear your position on that.
Dr. Nelson already has all the answers, so she can just go ahead.
I, I don't envy you as decision-makers. This is really hard and complex and intense. There's so many different stakeholders. I really appreciate the call to bring parents and adult doctors and teachers and everybody into the conversation. It's absolutely critical. I think the younger children are, the harder it is for them to socially distance. And also, the harder it is for them to do distance learning. I, it, so I'll tell you, just from a parent's perspective, and I think you should, if I were making a decision, I would offer a virtual option for anyone, right? Anyone who doesn't feel comfortable and feels like they have the resources and wants to do all distance learning, and that's their preference, for whatever reason, they should have that option. I think certainly for elementary-age children, certainly for the early elementary-age children, like pre-K to say, third grade, before children are really able to read fluently and they need a lot of support. And I mean, I'm getting into curriculum things, this is not my tech. But again, I think it's harder and harder for them to do distance learning if, you know, you have to read well to be able to do independent assignments and things like that. So I think, again, having, I, I would say elementary school, especially if you are then able to use other spaces more creatively, that opens up spaces to have more spaces where you can have smaller groups with one teacher and without a lot of movement between groups, where you can have a pot or a bubble that doesn't mix with a lot of other pods or bubbles very often. I feel like that could be one option, as much as that's feasible. And I, again, I don't know all of your facilities, or maybe different considerations of different schools, but.
Yeah, I'll add in my, my thoughts, Ms. Burke. So I think this is all, I, I echo Dr. Nelson's sentiments that this is a really, really hard decision and so many different variables to take into account. And I'm glad that I just get to advise and not decide. So here's how I think through what we know. I think we know that there is no option that has no cost. And so we are trying, whatever we decide, there's going to be a cost to it. And so the question we are trying to answer is what is, what way forward minimizes the costs? Not what way forward has no cost. And those costs are also multifactorial and, and the, and just have to be thought about really carefully. From a medical standpoint, what we know, and I think we have really good data, is the younger children, specifically under 12, just do not transmit the disease much to each other or to adults. And that, you know, the New York City data, again, I think is the best data set we have, and it's a lot of data. Those were young children, pre-K, because a lot of those were the healthcare workers' children that they couldn't leave at home. And there just was not, and those kids, presumably, they were trying to get them to mask, and I'm assuming they were not masking. It was over 10,000 children. They couldn't have all been following the guidelines appropriately. And we still did not see any center that had, what the report is, more than one case. But let's say, we assume they forgot to report some. There was no cluster, there was no center without five cases, with more than five cases. So I think we can, we have data that makes us convinced that that's a, that's a relatively low risk. And we'll, we still have to track the data if we make that decision. But that population, both for the, the benefit of being in school and for the relatively low risk of transmitting this disease and hurting either them or adults in our community, like, that that's good data that we, we should pay attention to and make some decisions around. I think as we get past, as we get into the adolescent age and on up, it is a curve, the, the disease risk curve is a curve up. It is not a sudden line, but it is a second, that would be a second cluster of people to make decisions around. So, and I think the data, again, is pretty good there. So yes, the priority list to me, when I think about cost-benefit, is that the elementary school, and I think all the way down to even toddlers, is that we have good data that it's relatively low risk to, to find ways to put them in. And the benefit to them, the social benefits, educational benefits are even more, are increased for them compared to middle and high schools, so. You can figure out how to do that, Ms. Burke.
Thank you. And Ms. Dorr, another question?
Yeah, sorry, one more question for me. Any increased risks for pregnant women?
I can comment on that, and Nelson, or Bergen, you might know some stuff as well. But so what, what we do know is there does not seem to be in third trimester of pregnancy, that there, there just hasn't been any real outcomes that are concerning. We do not have data on first trimester, which is a whole different thing. And with any disease, any contagious disease, that's an important, that's when the fetus is forming. And so we are going to know some of that data. There is no ending, like, the other coronaviruses in the same family do not seem to have an impact on fetus formation. But, and so that's as best as we can get at this point. But in about, I don't know, six months, we will have more data about that. But right now, we don't have first trimester data. We have third trimester data, which is, it doesn't seem to affect the mom and/or the baby that's born.
And in terms of risk of contracting and having severe illness during pregnancy to the woman, it does not appear that there's increased risk of worse disease during pregnancy, which is unlike other respiratory viruses. So influenza does tend to look more severe in pregnant women, but this COVID-19 does not, thankfully. So that's something that Emily Godvout taught me, so I've heard her presentation. I'm sorry, she's not here anymore. She's really our infectious disease expert. But we have had a series of pregnant women come in and labor. We are testing all women coming in and labor at BCU. And we have had, Ramesh probably knows the, the most up to date, but more than a dozen, maybe two dozen moms who have tested positive. Many of them have been asymptomatic or very mildly symptomatic. And so far, only one infant has tested positive of all of those moms. And they're going, they're living in the same households, and it came out of that body, you know? So that, that to me was also reassuring. And, and there's something about pregnancy and early, you know, near the neonatal period where your immune system is just different because you have to be very tolerant, right? So the pregnant woman's immune system is different because they can't reject the fetus as a foreign object. And so there's something that seems to be somewhat protective and that, that dynamic and immune system change.
And I think the other data around pregnancy that we can draw some conclusions from, but nothing complete, is that there have not been a cluster of pre-term early deliveries because of COVID. So it hasn't thrown women into early labor, which is some information that is also important. And that comes from like the NICU world.
All right, I, thank you so much, Dr. Avola and, and Dr. Ramesh and Dr. Nelson. This has been strenuous for you, I'm sure, but so helpful for us. And we will let you leave and go home and have a nice evening while we continue on. And thank you.
I just, really, anybody, if, for follow-up conversations, don't hesitate to reach out. We'll, we'll help in any way that we can. But thanks so much. Take care.
Before, wait, before you go, Danny, I just wanted to personally say thank you to Danny. From the very first, actually, before we closed, I remember calling him up and saying, hey, I've been reading about this coronavirus thing. Can you tell me a bit about it? And he has always been available to me, to the leadership team as a thought partner and a guide. And we're very blessed here in Richmond and in Henrico to have Dr. Avola at the helm. And personally, I just couldn't have a better partner in this time of crisis. So thank you, we, we appreciate you.
Thank you, Jason, thank you.
Thank you.
Take care.
Okay. And Ms. Gibson would like to make a motion.
I'd like to motion that we move public comment to, to follow now.
Second.
All right. Is there any discussion? All right. Ms. Wilson?
Okay, Ms. Dorr?
Yes.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Hi.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Ms. Paige?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
No.
And Ms. Burke?
Oh, sorry, yes.
Motion passes. Seven, one.
All right. Ms. Wilson, are you ready to read the public comment for this meeting?
I am, if you give me one moment, just to pull them up.
And I will remind people that we limit your, the amount of your public comment to minutes. And that if there are multiple identical emails, we will identify all those who send it, but only read it one time. All right?
Let me get my stopwatch ready. And it's two minutes, correct?
Yes.
Gwen Hanley stated that they are an alumni at BCU and writing to you all about my thoughts about law enforcement in our schools and the school-to-prison pipeline. The further criminalization of Black youth is due to Richmond Police Department's presence in Richmond Public Schools. I urge you to abolish law enforcement from our schools. Instead, staff them with enough mental health professionals to help our children and teens. Schools in predominantly Black and Latinx communities have a high police presence. Our schools are not equipped with the enough mental health, mental health professionals needed to process the traumas that have been endured by our children of color due to racism, white supremacy, food insecurity, broken families due to incarceration and police brutality, and so much more. We need to start the process of healing the effects of racism and white supremacy instead of compounding them. RPS specifically is also lacking the funds to keep their school buildings up to code. Our schools are ripe with mold, water damage, and pests such as rats and cockroaches. School districts like Fairfax County Public Schools routinely renovate and build new schools to keep their students safe from environmental illness and pests. Lastly, I call on you to abolish the school-to-prison pipeline. In America, Black children are 10 times more likely to be incarcerated than white children. In Virginia, Black youth are seven times more likely than white youths to be incarcerated. In America, we spend anywhere from 82 In America, we spend anywhere from eighty-two thousand to five hundred and eighteen thousand per child to incarcerate. In the state of Virginia, it can cost one hundred and ninety-eight thousand a year to imprison a child, but only twelve thousand a year for public education. Youth prisons are psychologically damaging, lower life expectancy. My buzzer rang and I can't stop it. Jessica Diaz. Dear members of the RPS School Board and Superintendent Camus. I am a teacher in RPS. I teach middle school and I am currently teaching with our summer camp at home program. Without disclosing my entire personal health history, I can say that I am considered a high risk individual for COVID-19. I love teaching, I love my students, and I love my school, but I don't feel comfortable teaching in person in the fall yet. At this point, I don't want to choose between my career that I love and my health. The plans that I've seen introduced don't protect staff members' health and hardly protect students. It is not true that school age students don't get this disease. We haven't seen huge numbers in school age students because our schools have been closed. We have been telling families to stay home and socially distance. However, if we reopen schools and students are exposed, which they will be. There is still a similar infection rate among kids and adults. While many people who are exposed to this virus are asymptomatic. This is hugely concerning as many students and teachers alike will have a false sense of safety. That could lead people to engage in risky behaviors and not respect the social distancing hygiene rules. The proposed hybrid models don't address the logistical problems such as. How will we enforce students staying six feet apart from each other? How will teachers teach online cohort and in-person cohort at the same time? How will, how will we reduce mixing at the secondary level if our students transition between teachers each hour? What PPE is going to be provided to staff, students and staff? Are we expected to have our own PPE? How will high risk teachers be accommodated? With any hybrid model, staff members are exposed to every single student. If there is even one positive case in a building, there will need to be extensive contact tracing and testing. How will RPS afford to conduct COVID-19 testing for all staff and students if there is an outbreak? Hillary Levinson and Stephen Wade. Dear Richmond School Board members and Dr. Camus, we are residents and homeowners in the Fox Benford District. Our son will begin kindergarten at Fox in the fall and our daughter will be an RPS student in three years. We are writing to enthusiastically support any and all efforts to terminate the contracts between the Richmond Police Department. And Richmond Public Schools and remove police from schools. We do not believe their presence keeps our children and their classmates safe. Indeed, given local and national data reflecting a school to prison pipeline. We believe that the presence of police in our schools only serves to disproportionately criminalize black, Latinx, indigenous and other oppressed groups by the police. As the school board and the superintendent of our schools, you have the responsibility to protect students from a police department and its culture. That has attacked protesters marching for black lives and that took Marcus David Peters' life. We have seen the ten-point racial justice policy agenda with its call for a reassessment of the relationship with the RPD. A reassessment is woefully insufficient and will likely result in a further delay of removing the police. There are other ways to keep our children and their classmates safe, and we urge you to implement them with the urgency this moment demands. Deny a riot. To the RPS Board, safety, community. Often we think about what these words mean. We are subconsciously imagining exclusion. Over many different historical eras, especially in the context of public schools. Our ideas of safety have been through a racialized lens. We cannot ignore the fact that for so long, safety for some has meant harm for others. For long, the illusion of safety for white students has existed solely based on the harm and violence done towards the erasure of black and brown students. At the very root of the issue is the belief that some students are more deserving of education and safety than their counterparts of color. The time is now to listen to the voices of those who have been traditionally marginalized. Now is the time to reexamine how we have prioritized some lives over others. In a system where black girls are several times more likely to be suspended than their peers. And black boys are several times more likely to have interactions with law enforcement. It appears to be too big of an issue to simply ignore. The presence of police in a place such as school where students should feel safe. As a level of fear, intimidation and danger for black and brown students. Who have and continue to be disproportionately negatively impacted by the system of policing. From issues of racial profiling to police brutality, there is a deeply rooted distrust that exists within communities of color. Because of the unchecked power that has resulted in abuse. Now is the time to end the current contract with Richmond Police. And remove school resource officers from Richmond Public Schools facilities. Now is the time to make Richmond Police Schools, Richmond Public Schools safe and equitable for all. This is not all of the work that must be done to overcome decades of wrongdoing and erasure of the experiences of people of color. However, it is a good first step. In a time such as now, if you choose to be silent or recoil back into comfort, you are complicit. Bridgett Newberry. Teachers in the classrooms of RPS with poor ventilation with small areas to work in without a vaccine. And if everyone is not tested frequently, it's tantamount to a death sentence for students and teachers. Virtual is the right way to go in August. There are too many variables that shift daily. There is no leadership on the federal level. There is not enough science here to make an informed decision. Brooke Pega. I have a kindergartner and a pre-kindergartner. I love the idea of my kids going back to school, but I am super concerned about daycare. I am a teacher with CCPS. Right now I have no idea who is going to watch my kids when I am working five days a week and they are only attending two days a week. And whoever it is, are they going to be in charge of making sure my kids do the virtual work? My kids were part of parks and rec for 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 before and after school care last year, but is that going to be an option this year? This is literally keeping me awake at night, not to mention the exposure to the virus they will experience and then bringing home to a pregnant me. Hakim Fung. I believe that if edgenuity is to be used for blended learning, teachers should have some way to customize course content. So that it can be geared towards the teachers intended learning activities to meet learning objectives. Oftentimes, some of the content in the full course may not directly fit into what the teaching model teachers may have with students. By giving teachers a way to take out and add in content to create their own modules. They can integrate online material into a more seamless experience for the students. That being said, edgenuity has released new 2020 releases. That I would like the RPS team to review if we are going to incorporate a significant online component for this coming school year. New 2020 releases include AP Biology, AP Statistics, Business Computer Information Systems. And a link was provided. I would also like RPS to offer on edgenuity as many courses as possible. Map to the RPS Program of Studies, including but not limited to core honors, AP courses and elective. So that families choosing to be all virtual will have a robust enough course list to be on track for graduation. This would also provide some level of equity so that students studying studying fully at home. Will have a similar amount of options as students studying at the physical location. By also making these courses accessible to be customized by teachers. The courses can also become richer through the blending of visible face lessons, in-person Zoom and online content. Teacher-made customized edgenuity. These are just my thoughts. I have heard that edgenuity has a flat rate cost with the district, so I am assuming that the additional cost to implement this would be minimal. As a teacher who teaches across multiple disciplines. I can also assist teachers blend instruction with edgenuity across multiple departments as well. Thank you, and I appreciate that all that RPS has done. The next comment is from several citizens, Sarah Hunter, Phil Ripkey, Elizabeth Jorgensen Vest, Ben Himmelfarb, Jean Boker and Jordan Gwen. As an elementary teacher of Richmond Public Schools, I am concerned there is no plan for the upcoming school year. Yet there is a discussion for voting on the topic for tonight's meeting. As you may be aware, the COVID-19 rate of infection across the country is trending upwards. The number of infected individuals have surpassed our rate when we originally closed brick and mortar schools in March. Many times in RPS, we have poorly planned implementations, but this time lives will quite literally be at risk. We cannot afford something to be poorly planned, and it is the responsibility of Jason Camus to supply us with answers to major questions. We need our school board to ensure administration has a plan for RPS well before schools open. If you decide to make a decision without information of how our community is affected. You show your lack of concern for the lives with the district you should be representing, which won't be forgotten. To put it bluntly, if there is no plan, there should be no vote. Thank you. And I said that was an RPS teacher, but Phil Ripkey is a community member. On behalf of the Richmond Region League of. United Latin American citizens, we request that RPS update their help desk phone number, eight zero four seven eight zero six one nine five. We continue to get concerns from families about their inability to connect with someone through this number. Too often, no one is available to answer the call and no one returns calls after a message is left. Another issue we continue to hear from families is the accessibility of computer repair and hotspot help. The schedule for computer help is not clearly listed outside of schools. And the van or individual who is assigned to repairing computers is not easily spotted by families. The following are our requests regarding the RPS help desk. Staff dedicated to answer calls during the hours of operation listed on the recording. A commitment that voicemails be returned within 24 hours. Add signage to your school buildings providing information to help parents navigate to support staff or computer help locations.
Can you slow down a little bit for the interpreters?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Add signage to your school buildings providing information to help parents navigate to support staff or computer help locations. Ensure that the signs are in an infographic format since some families cannot read English or Spanish. We cannot continue to preach about teaching and leading with love or holding our educators educators. And students to higher expectations when our division leadership isn't meeting the same expectations. Latinx families of RPS and all other families in RPS are holding you all to higher expectations. And I'm skipping the next few because they're duplicates. The next one is Shay Lamir McGrath. Hello, RPS Board. I am a teacher at Patrick Henry School of Science and Arts. I am writing to question what will happen with teachers who are on the CDC high-risk category or on medical leave. This is personal for me as I am due on October 1st and know that and now that the CDC has put pregnancy nursing. On its precautionary list, I was wondering if there is a plan for this. As I am certain I am not the only person in RPS in this situation. Getting substitutes is a problem in RPS as it is. And many of our subs fall under a queue of the CDC high-risk categories. There will be a time when teachers cannot come to school. And combining classes is not an option as it was in the past. Even with planned leave, what if the long-term sub cannot complete distance portions of the plane? If we are home and still completing the distance portion for our homeroom students, say on Friday, if that plan is chosen. What is the amount of time we are required to take off? Will our subs be penalized as their pay wouldn't increase with the sequential day piece missing? What is the plan for teachers who have pre-existing conditions? What will happen to their class? Will they have to teach only digitally? I am sure I speak for every teacher. We want to be back in the classrooms with our students so badly, but these are all things we need real plans for. I appreciate your time. And I'm skipping the next one because it's been read. Renee Bowers. Good evening, Mr. Camus and members of the school board. I am both a RPS elementary school teacher and a resident of the city. As both a teacher and a resident, I urge you to support option A to reopen with a staggered start. There is so much we don't know about the long-term effects of this virus. While for many, this is a mild illness, what about our high-risk students and staff that could die? For those of us that may be healthy ourselves, what about our loved ones that are high risk? I do not feel comfortable fully reopening with a full class. It might be feasible for older kids to wear a mask and maintain social distancing. But as an elementary teacher, this is not a feasible plan. We need to continue to plan for smaller classes for a safer reopening for all of our RPS family. Thank you for your time. Allison Verden. Good evening. As a new teacher within RPS, I am concerned with the plans for reopening in the fall. My questions are concerning the inevitable fact that a staff member at my school will test positive for COVID-19. I have not heard or seen any plans for when that occurs as to the plan of action for quarantining. The individuals who were in contact with the person. Is the teacher to quarantine? Is the entire class to quarantine? If I am to quarantine or worse, become infected with COVID-19. And being a new employee who has not yet earned a substantial number of sick days, will my leave be covered or will I have to take leave without pay? I understand the frustration and difficulty put onto families with a fully virtual option. However, being a teacher is already a difficult career, let alone being asked to risk the health and safety of ourselves and our loved ones. The idea of not being able to come home after a hard day of work because I put my family at risk is heartbreaking, especially when there is another option. I hope you take into consideration the incredible risk you are asking teachers to endure if you require us to re-enter the building to teach. I have my concerns regarding safety within the school. However, I will leave you to consider this one ask. I appreciate your time and consideration to the needs of your employees. Thank you. Tiffany Clark. Good evening, Mr. Camus and members of the board. I am a City of Richmond resident, a parent of a rising kindergartner at Westover Hills Elementary School. And a classroom teacher at Broad Rock Elementary School. I am fully invested in our city and schools, and for that reason, I support proposal Plan A. We need to prioritize our students' health and safety, which can only be done virtually or with a staggered schedule. Thank you for your time. Christina Sankowitz. Dear members of the school board and Mr. Camus. I am a teacher at Maggie Walker Governor's School, previous RPS teacher and a parent of a rising Southampton kindergartner. As it stands, there is no way to ensure the safety of the students or staff in any school from spreading the virus. There seems to be more questions than answers and for sure, a strong lack in funding to ensure proper safety measures. I am writing to let you know that I support Plan A with virtual instruction. But only with optional in-person standard learning for both students and staff. This would value the lives of both students and teachers who need to remain safer at home. Kristen Allgood. The school board needs to vote on the nun. I sympathize that more information and feedback is desired, but many of the concerns won't be fully addressed until a plan is approved. Once approved, parents can weigh their options and RPS can give a deadline for families to opt for virtual only or homeschool learning. Which is probably going to be a significant percentage. Once the district has those those numbers, they can reassess school and bus capacity, teacher reassignments. Balance the budget, organize professional development and many of the other expressed concerns. All of these steps take time. If implementation is going to be remotely successful, two months is the bare minimum amount of time necessary. Also, parents and students have been in a panic for weeks already regarding the uncertainty of what the return will look like. They need two months to prepare and make arrangements. I understand that it is frightening to vote on a plan that does not have every concern addressed fully. But in this, in this situation, a vote is needed. I am an RPS parent, former RPS teacher and education professor. I am an RPS parent, former RPS teacher, and education professor. Victoria Pearson, an ELL teacher in RPS. I would like to share a few of my questions regarding the reopening plan. I hope that the board will listen to all of the concerns expressed tonight and seek solutions for the health and safety of all RPS staff, students, families, and community members. One, regarding the virtual plus in-person options happening simultaneously, is the teacher responsible for both sets of students? Will we be required to teach asynchronous online classes while teaching in person? If so, will teachers be provided with extra planning time within their schedules to account for the additional work? Two, how does option A with alternating days for students take into consideration that teachers and staff are exposed to all students and could easily contract and spread the virus? To all staff, students, and families, especially in buildings where a case has occurred. Four, what structures are in place for teachers who are high-risk or live with those who are high-risk and cannot return a person this September? Are there job protections for them? How might we fill their positions temporarily in the building when we already face a shortage of substitutes? Five, what are the procedures for when a student or staff member contracts the virus? Will all staff members and families be notified immediately? Will entire buildings go virtual to quarantine for two weeks? Will teachers be provided paid sick leave for at least two weeks to quarantine if they test positive during the school year? Six, how is RPS ensuring that every building will be staffed with a full-time nurse and proper PPE for teachers? Shannon Nguyen. I know you have had a lot of feedback and discussion on reopening. It is hard to select just one option on the survey without having a lot of details on each, but I selected option Schedule One for the following reasons. We would see every student every day, and the student and family would know if they were AM or PM. Much like how we used to do AMPM kindergarten, seems to be easier to keep up with this. May, with this may be easier for families with multiple children on the same schedule. The buses could pick up PM when dropping off AM. This may be easier for daycares as well. We wouldn't need the cafeteria or even take class time to eat in the classroom. We could send AM group home with lunch bags and PM group home with dinner bags. We would not have to be concerned with recess playground time because each group would only be there half day. The school could have a cleaning time in between. Teacher staff would eat and play in between. The instruction time would be very purposeful. I know according to the data, option Schedule Two is looking like the best, most selective. Option Two seems like it would make more sense if it was Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday, Friday, with Wednesday being an in-class teacher-only day for virtual lessons and planning, and the custodial crew could do a mid-week deep cleaning. I am hopeful that option one or two will work. I also am thinking this may be a blessing in disguise because smaller class sizes should improve student learning, and smaller class sizes has been a request from teachers for many years. While this is my opinion about how schools should reopen, the other side of me is very nervous about schools reopening. We shut down schools March thirteenth with just, with just a few positive cases of mainly older generation. Now we have more positive cases and the Heather Tru. I am reaching out to express my concern with in-person schooling during this pandemic. I feel that it would endanger our teachers and staff as well as students and their families. While I understand that some families may be limited to in-person schooling because of work, I would love to see virtual schooling options to help keep everyone safe. I feel that many parents, including myself, will opt for homeschooling if virtual schooling isn't an option. It is my understanding that funding for public schools is tied to enrollment. I don't want to see any students suffer due to low enrollment. I feel we, if we have virtual schooling options, we can reduce risk to students, staff, in the school and maintain enrollment funded. Thank you for taking the time to consider this, and I look forward to hearing back. Dana Hinky, hi. Before the upcoming meeting, I wanted to throw yet another thing out there for your consideration. We are a high-risk family. My husband is a firefighter at a hazmat station. I am a type one diabetic. We are unbelievably fortunate to have job security at this time. And I am a S A H M, so learning from home is not a hardship to us. We have decided to keep our daughter out of school in order to allow the children who need to be there a safer environment. In my opinion, virtual learning is okay at best. I threw the curriculum out the window pretty early on into the pandemic, opting for more hands-on options. I know there are many families that are now considering homeschool instead of the virtual option. I would like to do this, but I don't want to impact school funding. My question is, can we come up with an option for families that would prefer to use their own curriculum to keep their kids enrolled? It could be scheduled testing, enrollment, PT, et cetera. It would even be lovely to have teachers that are unable to return to the classroom help to manage these families. Questions could be lobbied their way, resources shared. This is all brainstorming, obviously. I just don't want to see our schools suffer anymore financially. If any of this was confusing, please feel free to email me. Mary Worley. I have a few comments questions as a decision to reopen is quickly approaching. One, who decides what teachers will teach virtually? There are teachers with newborns, elderly parents, immune deficiencies, et cetera. How does one decide which takes priority? Two, what happens when there is a large population of teachers who would need to teach virtually, yet not enough students who opt for virtual learning? Where does that leave those teachers? Three, what about teachers who simply are not comfortable subjecting themselves to this disease? Just because a teacher appears young and healthy does not mean they cannot become extremely ill. Thank you for your time. Jean Rice. Dear school board members, I teach for RPS, but due to past backlash from commenting publicly, I no longer feel comfortable identifying myself. Teachers should be free to bring their concerns and questions to you without fear of backlash. That being said, I dearly love my students and have worked tirelessly on their behalf for years. I have kept in contact with them since March through videos, social media, phone calls, and email. I was devastated in March when I found out that we would not be returning. However, I am extremely concerned with coming back in person. I read today that RPS is, is thinking of narrowing the social distancing to just three feet. This is extremely disturbing to hear. How are we going to realistically enforce the mask rule inside the classroom? If I am being made to teach within three feet of a student, that student will absolutely be wearing a mask. Teachers everywhere are apprehensive and anxious about this. There are teachers from across the United States voicing similar concerns in the news and social media. Overall, we ask that you clearly value the health and safety of your teachers through your vote when deciding about opening. We are scared, and we want to feel like you understand, and instead of feeling like you're saying, that's too bad, oh, well. Please consider these questions when voting. One, have you invited REA or VEA to help make your decision? Two, if a teacher is out, where will substitutes come from? Teachers cannot join classes when a teacher is out anymore. Three, how many positive cases before school closed down? Four, if a teacher has been seen and treated for anxiety, will this constitute an existing condition? Five, how is everyone going? Caitlin. And I don't want to butcher your last name, Caitlin, so I, I apologize. As a community member of Richmond and a teacher in Richmond Public Schools, I am extremely concerned about RPS's plan or lack thereof to return to school. Our schools are already underfunded and in dire condition with lack of basic essentials, and this is under ideal circumstances. I do not believe all air vents with, will be working, proper stocking of soap, toilet paper, and PPE, hot water throughout buildings, and adherence to social distancing requirements will be possible to come by in a mere seven weeks. I am also extremely concerned that teachers anxieties are not being taken into consideration. Who decides what immunocompromised conditions are okay to teach with and not okay to teach with? What are considerations for mental health? How can the school system compel us to disclose our family members' health conditions? And what about teachers who just plain and simple are not comfortable with returning to work? Is concern for lives not reason enough to work virtually? Ignoring just basic concerns for our health, safety, will my classroom actually be able to adhere to social distancing? What if students refuse to wear masks properly? What kind of learning can happen in a socially distant classroom? I cannot collect passout papers. There will be no movement, no collaboration, no group work, no projects. There will literally only be direct instruction. I can provide much more valuable learning virtually. I urge the school board and superintendent to listen to teachers. I know these decisions are difficult and complicated at best, but safety for staff and students is paramount and should be the number one priority, going back to Ann Forrester. I am a teacher, I am an RPS teacher and Richmond resident, and I have two main questions for the school board and superintendent that I feel must be answered and clearly communicated to RPS families and staff before any further reopening plans are discussed. One, what procedure will RPS use when a staff member or student tests positive, positive for COVID nineteen? What about if a family member or housemate of staff or students test positive? Who will be quarantined and for how long? When can a positive person return to school? Two, what will be RPS's policy for determining which staff members will be allowed to stay working remotely for health reasons? What about those staff with a family member that is high-risk? What proof will employees have to show to document their risk factor? Who is this health data being shared with? Do we know how many employees would need this option and how that will affect staffing and numbers at our schools? There are so many questions around reopening, but safety and health of students and staff has to be the priority. If we can't come to a clear consensus on those two topics, how can we expect staff, students, and their families to feel safe returning to our buildings in person this fall? Louis Luna. Dear members of the school board, I am a teacher with Richmond Public Schools, and I am here to request that, one, the school board does not vote on a schedule for reopening schools until the plans and logistics are available for all community stakeholders to see so they are aware of the plans and can make an informed decision for themselves and their families. Two, the school board investigates the Richmond Alternative School in light of claims of child abuse on the Black at RPS Instagram before a contract is renewed with Camelot. While trusting an anonymous source is problematic, due to Camelot's history of child abuse in other states, it is necessary for RPS to at least investigate these claims and verify the legitimacy or illegitimacy of the claim before renewing a contract with Camelot. It is time to heal our students, especially the ones most marginalized, not, not re-traumatize them. It is apparent that we have a problem of a weak school board and a strong administration. This has led to undemocratic processes plaguing RPS over the years. This is an election year, and a number of seats are up for grabs. We need a school board that will stand up for their students, parents, and teachers. Robert Gabey, hello. I am an elementary Spanish teacher. Last year, my schedule was organized so that I taught six classes daily. I would go into each classroom to deliver my lessons since I did not have my own room. Most classes had been between fifteen to twenty-five students. Even at the lower end of this range, some of these classrooms were quite, quite crowded. I hope you can imagine how hot and crowded a roughly thirty-by-twenty-two-foot classroom with twenty-five students is. Much like middle and high school teachers, I was exposed to upwards of one hundred to one hundred children a day. I missed several days last year for sickness due to this exposure, as most teachers do when starting to teach in a new school. Safe social distancing is not feasible, even with a staggered schedule in which half of the students attend two days out of the week. I am eager to engage my students with fun Spanish lessons and activities, but I will not risk my students' health and safety, that of their families, my colleagues, my loved ones, or my own life for the sake of a sense of normalcy. I look forward to a virtual opening to the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year. If the school board votes to hold classes in person before twenty-one days have elapsed with zero new cases across Virginia, I will be withholding my labor and presence from Richmond Public Schools. Camille Hopkins, good evening, RPS school board. I'm a teacher in Richmond Public Schools, and I first and foremost have great concern about returning to in-person instruction in August, September. Since the survey was shared to stakeholders, the coronavirus cases have increased in states all around us, and to be honest, that's scary. With that said, there has been plenty of conversation about protecting students, but what about protecting the adults in the building? We should not be expendable in this decision. We have families, friends, and colleagues that we want to protect as well as ourselves. Please vote for the first virtual option, at least to start the year, for the protection of everyone involved. Second, the Instagram page, Black at RPS, has addressed several concerns with teachers, administrators, and city hall personnel in our district. What action will be taken to address these concerns? We can't sweep this under the rug as though these incidents didn't happen. Implementing the new real history course for students and staff will not rectify these concerns. Students and several different members of RPS personnel have shared their shocking stories, and something needs to be done. Jessica Shim, hi there. Here is my public comment for the July ninth, twenty twenty school board meeting. I am a teacher in RPS. I am writing to ask the superintendent and school board to offer teachers, in-school admin, and staff the option to work online or in-person next year without penalty for choosing either. The last couple of days has clearly shown that there is no plan, no answers to the hundreds of questions that should have been asked to stakeholders well before this time. This is not surprising, but still disappointing, as we are literally talking about human lives. The least we could do is offer folks a choice so that we can all feel safe to continue our lives to the extent in which we feel comfortable. Thank you. Megan Petzel. To whom it may concern, when I hear the statement, the benefits of going to school in person outweigh the risks, what I really hear is going to school in person is worth having some people get seriously ill and die. Nothing is more important than keeping our RPS family alive. Current COVID nineteen data does not support opening. Children are dying from this. Individuals with no pre-existing conditions are dying of this too. Lives and community health should be put above everything else when we are dealing with a worldwide pandemic. We should be coming together as a community to find alternative solutions. How much money will we save from keeping buildings closed? We can use that money to support families that are essential or need support due to lack of flexibility with jobs. Or we can help support these families by providing a daycare model that's just not possible when talking about school normally. Super small groups, siblings stay together, same teacher for the duration of the day and semester. Any staff members that would feel comfortable volunteering for this daycare position could watch the kids while they are still getting virtually taught by each of their teachers as they would have been if they were at home. This would only be available for those families that are essential or have no other options for the fall. We should be putting all ideas on the table right now to see what is actually feasible and safe for our kids, families, and families, and staff during this time. The virtual summer school model is going well and we still have several months to work together to improve it before the fall. Many families think virtual looks like RPS at home and edgenuity from the spring, but it can be so much more interactive and teacher-student driven. While we are using Google Meet for summer camp at RPS, I strongly recommend the district purchase Zoom. Zoom offers many features that Google Meet is lacking. Alicia Winnie. As an RPS teacher and parent, I am concerned that we are trying to reopen our schools too quickly. I understand the desire to serve our community and provide care for our students. That's what teachers do. We sacrifice ourselves for our students in so many ways. However, it would be inhumane to force our faculty and staff to risk their lives to serve when there are other options available. The lives of our students, faculty, and staff are irreplaceable and infinitely valuable. While virtual learning may not be perfect, there are some advantages to it. I am currently teaching a second grade class with students from all over the city. They log in every day excited to learn, grow, and build relationships. Students are able to work together, move around when needed, and no one is hidden behind a mask. It has only been two weeks, but I have already learned so much about what works. Imagine what we can do with two months to intentionally train and plan for it in the fall. Another possible solution is to allow teachers and staff that want to return to volunteer for those positions. We have data on what works in daycare. Daycares, small groups, siblings stay together, same teacher for the duration of the day and semester, et cetera. We can use that model to provide supervision while students are still being taught virtually if necessary. Open students' spots based on the number of volunteers. Give priority to the younger students and those with the greatest need for in-person instruction. We need to rethink what school looks like because forcing people back into the buildings is unacceptable. No solution is going to be perfect, but we need to prioritize the lives of our RPS family. Thank you for your time and consideration. Katina Harris. We, the Richmond Education Association, would like to state what should be a very non-controversial position on returning to school during a global pandemic. We support a virtual return rather than a physical return to our school buildings in September. At the present time, it is unequivocally unsafe for us to conduct in-person learning. Research is certain that this illness is airborne and highly contagious, especially indoors. It is unsafe for people to be gathering indoors in large groups at any location. However, it is particularly unsafe to do so in Richmond Public School facilities where we have poor air quality systems and open classroom formats. Therefore, the push for us to return to in-person learning at the beginning of the school year amounts to the following. Therefore, the push for us to return to in-person learning at the beginning of the school year amounts to the following statement. We know this is unsafe for staff and students, and we know that some people will die as a result. However, we intend to do so anyway. The rationales providing are the following. Without schools open, the economy will suffer. Without a physical learning environment, the education of our children will be of low quality. Due to social, societal inequities and opportunities, not all students will have equal access to learning. Without schools open, the health and well-being of children will suffer. Society is telling us that the lives of staff and students are worth the sacrifice for the above. However, we feel that as a society, we are failing to ask the right questions. Why is our entire economy resting on schools as childcare centers? Shouldn't American businesses in the year 2020 have advanced to the point that other countries? Mary Winnie. I am disturbed by the thought of schools opening up at this time with the number of people positive for COVID-19 virus is on the rise. The dangers of death and co-morbidities with this virus are to greater risk for our children and their families. My household is of three generations. My daughter is a teacher and my granddaughter a student. I am in the high-risk age group. These years are valuable to me. I enjoy my life with good health and I want many more to enjoy with my family. Over the years, my daughter has come home from her teaching position with an illness and shared it with me. We joked about our getting sick as we never thought of the possibility it could end one or both of our lives. That is not the case with this virus. People in leadership positions making decisions that affect the lives of so many need to live up to the expectations of the people and make responsible decisions of protection. Education is a lifelong endeavor that can only happen when a person is alive. Remember, this virus is not selective. Everyone's family and friends are at risk. Robert James. Good evening Superintendent Cameras and school board members. I am writing because I have a great deal of anxiety as it relates to the reopening of our schools. Not only am I deeply concerned for my own child's health, but I am also concerned for the health of those who work hard every day to serve the students and families of Richmond Public Schools. I believe that the superintendent, as well as the board, should consider making learning completely virtual for the beginning of the 2020-2021 school year and make modifications as necessary. I believe that we should utilize the days proposed for in-person instruction for students with IEPs, certain English learners, and students that may need additional support with tutoring services. I know at this point, everyone, including parents, pediatricians, educators, and even politicians, want our students back in schools. And I agree that no form of education can take the place of being in a traditional in-person school setting. However, I would like to emphasize the point that the combination of science, medicine, and data should drive our decision-making as it relates to the health and well-being of students and staff opposed to emotion. The current facts tell us that the United States currently has more than three million diagnosed cases of COVID-19, and those numbers are continually rising. The facts tell us that children are not dying from COVID-19. A special needs child in Florida and a Hispanic child in North Carolina both died after being diagnosed with COVID-19. The facts tell us that adults are more likely to be at risk for COVID-19 and having a building full of adults every day that may choose not to wear a face covering or practice social distancing outside of work puts staff members and students at a greater risk of contracting COVID-19. And lastly, the United States Centers. Claire Thompson. I teach second grade at Broad Rock. Our students need in-person schooling, but families and staff need safety guarantees first. Already, we face staff shortages every day. Classroom teachers lose planning time because humanities teachers call out or host extra students who don't have a sub. Next year, we will have even more duties, i.e. hosting and cleaning breakfast, lunch, specials, and recess in classrooms. This proposal means teachers will have a longer duration of exposure, and if sub shortages continue, greater volume of exposure. When will teachers use the restroom, plan, or eat? Are humanities classes possible since these teachers work with most of the school? Where will students go when there is inevitably no substitute? When we test positive for COVID-19, we will use our own sick time, and will our students also quarantine? Where does a bus rider go when they come to school with a fever? How can we improve HVAC systems in moldy, dilapidated classes? These are just a few questions I urge you to consider. If we return without a robust safety plan, high-risk staff and families will die from COVID-19. Cassie Powell and Brianna Nomi. Good evening Chairwoman Owen, Vice Chairwoman Burke, Superintendent Cameras, and members of the board. This comment is submitted by Cassie Powell and Brianna Nomi on behalf of the Legal Aid Justice Center. As the school board considers reopening possibilities, we continue to urge the board to likewise consider the ways school discipline and school policing contribute to inequities in educational opportunity, particularly for Black and Brown students and students with disabilities. The reopening and school pushout are connected. Embracing a more effective, restorative, and fairer approach to student behavior is more important than ever. Many students, particularly students with disabilities that include behavioral needs, will find the transition back to school difficult. Policies designed to keep children in school rather than allowing them to be easily pushed out are essential. We appreciate that RPS is considering a ninety-day review of the presence of police in RPS. However, we ask the board to likewise review the role of school security officers. During two listening sessions held with community members regarding the role of police in schools, multiple community members expressed concerns with the way security personnel escalate conflicts with students and inflict harm on the students. Community members expressed that SSOs often create more problems for students than SROs. To focus solely on RPD and not at all on SSOs would miss a vital piece of the way overpolicing in RPS pushes students out through the school-to-prison pipeline. To that end, we urge the board to add to the ninety-day process a review of the role and presence of SSOs in RPS and solicit engaged community feedback on the role of both SROs and SSOs within RPS. According to. Tiffany Snead. Good afternoon. I would just like to share my concerns about returning back to school in the fall. As a parent and teacher, I am very concerned with how the return plans of a hybrid schedule will be implemented for teachers and how we will handle our own children at home. There are many unanswered questions about leave liabilities and scheduling that impact the decisions being made. I would like to see a diverse task force created to assure that all decisions are equitable. I charge the deciding party to complete a trial day as a student and teacher to ensure the safety of all as we consider what it will take to return back to our school buildings safely. Jamie Weinstein. Dear school board members and superintendent. I hope this email finds you well. I am writing with concerns about the back-to-school plan. I live in the fifth district, my children attend school in the fifth district, and I'm the chair for the finance department at George Wood High School. Between the back-to-school options, I prefer option A because that gives us a slower transition into school and gives us time to catch problems that we will have to resolve. Option B is a disaster. Until about a week ago, we were supposed to keep six feet of space between us. I was just in the emergency room in downtown Richmond last night, where the safe distance is still considered six feet or more. You say six feet to a teenager and they are already going to make it three feet or less. Now with the standard at three feet, they are definitely not going to practice any type of safe distancing. While we were out of school, I personally know three school families that were affected by COVID. The RPS Welcoming Center and LULAP were able to help the families, but if this happened while we were physically out of school, do we have any resources to help with groceries? Doctors and education with the outbreak that could happen when we're physically in school? Option B only offers two choices, in school or out. At a school like the one in which I teach, I predict we will have near one hundred percent in-person attendance, putting teachers at greater risk. I feel for parents and I feel for students. But after attending the outdoor graduation at my school, which was lovely, I realized social distancing at school would be a joke. Masks cannot be enforced and keeping the kids from hugging and touching is impossible. As this conversation continues, we need to think about the following to protect teachers and students. Unlimited sick days, no standardized testing, cleaning supplies provided, PPE provided, details on keeping buses safe. Kaisha King. I am a teacher at Woodville Elementary School. I have been at Woodville for nine years. I understand the importance of my students needing to be in school. I love being with my students and helping them socially, emotionally, culturally, and academically. Every year, we build a family in our classroom. I miss my school family, but as an advocate for my students, I would like to make you aware of some issues that we would have with full reopening. One, every school year, at least three times a year, I get an upper respiratory infection. It is from the poor air quality, including bacteria and mold in our building. I have put up with it because I love my students. Please look up the number of teachers at Woodville who have also experienced the same. Can you imagine what the stagnant air would produce? If we are returning to school, we cannot return to our school building unless the air quality changes. Two, some windows do not open in classrooms, and overall, most teachers buy their own cleaning supplies to clean their rooms. Three, we should not have to reuse PPE. If the healthcare system did not have adequate PPE, how is a consistently defunded educational system going to be able to have what we need? Please remember, the majority of students in RPS are students of color who and are the most vulnerable. I also want to know how students with disabilities will come to school for more days than their general peers if their least restrictive environment is with their general peers. On another note, I would like to hear about what is men doing about the educational policing going on by principals based on Black@RPS. That's the end of the comments. You're on mute, but you're welcome.
Okay. Now, Mr. Cameras, let us go to discuss recommended school reopening scenarios.
Thank you. Ms. Robles. I think we can all hear you.
Sorry about that. Let me look into this.
Good evening, everyone. We can.
You can still hear me. Okay, I'm sorry. This is so weird. Hope something is going on. Okay, I think we need to contact the host then.
Okay, let's hold for a second and see if we can get that resolved.
Okay. Can you hear me, Mr. Cameras?
Yes.
You still can. Okay. Apologize for that.
No problem.
Okay, Mr. Cameras, it says to go ahead and start. A different person will be translating.
Okay. Well, first, let me just say to everybody watching, or if you're still watching, to everybody who wrote in, to everybody who's emailed or called or texted, thank you. All of that feedback is so incredibly helpful. As I shared on Twitter yesterday, planning for reopening feels like playing a game of 3D chess while standing on one leg in a hurricane. And it's just extraordinarily difficult to think through all the different elements to ensure the safety and health of our students and our staff and also provide a high-quality education. Thing I have encountered in twenty-five years in education. And I think what I've realized is there just is no really good plan. There are a whole bunch of less-than-optimal plans. And we have a couple for the board this evening. By no means do I think these are the only ones. And I want to be clear, we have no pride of authorship on any of these plans. If there is a better one that the board and the public can help us come to, that's fantastic. I really appreciate the physicians who joined us this evening. I found their insights and their research and data to be very, very helpful. Has helped me think a little bit more about some of our plans and some of the advantages and disadvantages. But like, at the end of the day, I think the only way we get. we get through this, regardless of what plan we implement, is by just really doing everything we can to have empathy for each other, for each other's life experiences, whether you're a teacher or a parent or a student, a custodian. Everybody is grappling with really, really hard, gut-wrenching decisions and challenges right now. And my commitment is to do everything we possibly can to try to lead with that empathy. I think that's a lot of what it means to, to lead with love and teach with love and serve with love. And so I will try to demonstrate how we are hoping to do that in this reopening presentation. So with that, I'll get started. I've said a little bit about empathy. I do want to say a word about equity, one of our other guiding principles. We have tried to the extent possible in our planning to do everything we can to make sure that the kids who need the most support get the most support. And that's really hard, given all the complexities of virtual and in-person and hybrid. But we've tried to do that as, as best as we can. And I, I do think no matter what we ultimately decide, we have to make sure that our kids who need the most support get that. And, and that could mean students with I U Ps or our English learners or students facing homelessness, whatever the case may be. But I, I feel strongly and I know the board agrees that we have to prioritize those young people, regardless of which plan we, we adopt. Then finally, efficiency. To the extent possible, the, the simpler we can keep things, the better chance we have of executing well on them and executing them within the resources that we have. And so we've tried as, as best as we can, given the constraints, to try to be as efficient as we can with our plans. I do want to just to everybody who filled out the reopening survey. Nearly five thousand families, about twenty percent, which as family surveys go is, is actually pretty good. Clearly, we would want more. But we did have all schools represented. And on the staff side, over two thousand respondents, which is about seventy percent of our school-based employees. And again, all schools represented. So we're talking about close to, over seven thousand people who took the time to share their perspective. And we are so grateful for that. It's, it's really been helpful in trying to narrow down and focus on what the right options are. Survey's not perfect. It, it, we could have asked a hundred questions on the survey. And we, we probably need to go back to our families and staff with more thoughts after our discussion this evening and next week. But we are really, really grateful for the thousands of people who took the time to, to share that perspective. And then I also wanted to just thank the reopening task force. We had teachers and board staff and community members and so many others. We listed their names there and what school they're affiliated with. I want to be clear. There's nothing, by listing their names, I'm just thanking them. I'm not saying they endorse anything in the proposal. I just want to show my appreciation for them, for taking their time to share their perspectives. They really helped push our thinking and just dig into things that no single person or small group of people could possibly think of. And it's really through the, the wisdom of the collective of the entire R P S family that I think will make progress. We also had a principal task force, so I just want to thank all the principals who participated in those meetings as well. Their insights were also incredibly valuable. And thanks to Harry Hughes, our chief schools officer, for leading the task force work. Really appreciate that, Eric. All right, the presentation is split up in a number of sections. First and foremost, we're going to talk about health and safety. Then we'll talk about the academic plans, then we'll talk about staffing plans. And then we have some other considerations, technology, transportation, social emotional supports, things that we're still working on, but we did want to note are important parts of the plan. And then we'll talk a little bit about budget as well. And so I'm going to turn this over now to Michelle Hudasco, who has been leading a focus group on our health and safety work. I want to give a shout out to Angela Jones and Nikisha, our head of nursing, and all the folks who have participated in that work. We really appreciate all the dedication and diligence in trying to figure out how to preserve the, the safety and health of our students and our staff. So with that, I will turn it over to Michelle and I'm glad to keep turning the slides. I think I can manage that by following along with you.
Good evening, everyone. And, and I wanted to, to point out, we wanted to start our conversation this evening with health and safety. Because that's really our, our key priority at R P S is keeping students, staff, and families safe. And so our proposal here is an anchor for what would happen regardless of whatever academic plan or other decisions might be made. We want to keep these health and safety proposals on the table regardless of option. So we're going to walk through seven buckets of health and safety measures that we propose putting in place for a safe reopening. And I do just want to echo Jason's comments, tremendous appreciation to our health working group and especially Angela and Nikisha, who have liaised daily, if not hourly, with the health department, with other Virginia divisions to ensure that this proposal reflects best practice and current medical guidance. And then thanks, of course, to our principals and the reopening committee. We've brought this to them and their feedback has been invaluable in helping it iterate to where we are today. And we look forward to continued feedback to move it forward. So the first bucket is basically how we would start a day, and that's with a daily screening. So each day, all students, staff, and any visitors who may come to a building would engage in two screenings. The first is before even leaving home, we'll be asking all staff and students to answer the CDC screening questions about how they feel. Dr. Avula mentioned those questions early, earlier this evening, and they outline a variety of symptoms that you're to reflect on if you're feeling, and they help you determine if you should simply stay home. We know that we'll want to conduct a comprehensive awareness campaign about those key questions up to school starting and then throughout the school year so that folks know how to gauge their own health and make smart decisions. Once at school, though, we know that one of the more predictive, although certainly not only, but one of the more predictive screen tools is temperature. And so all staff, students, and visitors will receive a temperature check via walkthrough scanner. We've opted for the walkthrough temperature scanner due to speed and efficiency. It can accurately scan up to seventy individuals per minute. And the CDC threshold for what we'll be measuring here is a hundred point four, so a temperature of anything higher than that. In each school for these monitors, these scanners, we'll have two staff members. And I think those staff members, along with the nurse, would fit nicely with what Dr. Avula shared earlier about having a safety team within buildings. But these folks will monitor each scanner to ensure that A, everyone is properly scanned, and that two, if a fever is detected, that the appropriate next steps are taken. So for adults and the scanning for teachers or staff would, of course, happen prior to student arrival, they would need to go home and contact their medical provider about next steps. For students who are flagged as having a fever, they will move to a, a special isolated space and will contact the parents or caregivers to pick them up. For this bucket, the scanners, and obviously we're still looking at supply and doing some final research, but a general estimate on cost would be around a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. That would allow us to purchase sixty scanners, so one for all of our schools and preschool centers. And then larger schools would receive two scanners. The second bucket in health and safety relates to face coverings or masks. And so it will be, it's our proposal that R P S policy or protocol aligned, of course, with medical guidance is that each day, all students, staff, and visitors are required to wear a face covering at all times when in an R P S building, whether that's school or central office. Wearing a face covering at all times does also include the bus. I do want to flag that there may be some instances where medically fragile students for whom it may not be appropriate to wear a mask. The current CDC guidance specifically states that if a child cannot remove the mask independently, appropriateness of wearing the mask should be considered. So that's a place where we're still finalizing thoughts around that. If a family doesn't want their child to wear a mask, we would ask them that the, they would be choosing the all-virtual path. And for staff who may be unable to wear a mask due to their own health conditions, we would ask that they work remotely. And we'll talk more about those staff options later in the presentation. Given that masks or face coverings have been required in Virginia, we know a lot of individuals already have them. And so we would encourage students, staff, or visitors to bring their own mask when they come to the school building. However, should anyone not have one when they arrive, we would provide one, no questions asked. For our nurses, who we know may be interacting with individuals who may be displaying COVID-19 symptoms, we would be providing and having appropriately fitted for them an N ninety-five mask. And then also we recognize that there are some unique educational circumstances where clear masks are what would be most appropriate. That might include things like speech pathologists, students who have hearing loss during phonics instruction, where it's really important to see how the mouth is moving, that in those instances, we would use a clear mask. And I want to draw a distinction that we are choosing clear masks, not face shields, given medical guidance. As we look at costs here, we are estimating out thirty thousand cloth masks at about two dollars and twenty cents each. That would be able to provide every student and every staff member one if they forgot theirs, didn't have one. We'd have fifty thousand dollars available for a hundred thousand disposable masks in front offices, again, for visitors or someone who may not have one. And then a hundred thousand dollars for the clear masks as needed for some of these unique instructional instances. The third bucket, and obviously one that we talked a lot about earlier this evening with Dr. Avula and his team, is physical distancing. And so all individuals, whether that's student to student, student to adult, or adult to adult, will be required to maintain at least three feet of distance between them at all time. Six feet of distance will be maintained whenever possible. So some of the things that we'll do to ensure this distancing, one, student desks will be arranged with at least three feet between them. And if that means that some additional spaces within buildings need to be used to ensure that we're spreading them out, that will be done. The medical team earlier tonight talked a little bit about those pods or bubbles. And that's what we're talking about here, about, to the extent possible, avoiding the mixing of groups of students. We'll also be limiting the use and number of students in various communal spaces, whether that's playground or cafeteria or such. All front office reception points, and that's both in schools as well as within central office, are being measured now for a Plexiglas shield to provide an additional layer of, of protection for our front office staff who may be interfacing with then a much larger number of folks than a, a teacher might if they were just engaging with their, their pod, their, their small group. And so the only cost here with physical distancing would be the Plexiglas dividers. And we have a hundred listed here for various reception areas throughout schools and central offices. Hand washing really does remain one of the most important ways to stop the spread of the virus. And so we have a, a number of things proposed here. The first is, and again, we saw this in the medical presentation, we need to be explicit about hand washing. And so as we're building out our academic schedule, there will be multiple breaks built into the schedule for hand washing, using classroom sinks when available in primary grades and explicit trips to the bathroom for hand washing at other grades. We are looking into additional contracted staff to focus exclusively on maintaining our bathroom supplies to ensure that soap and paper towels, both in classroom and bathroom sinks, are monitored, recorded, and restocked throughout the day. And then finally, all classrooms as well as all common areas, for example, library, the office, the front entry space, will have a wall-mounted hand sanitizing station. We know that hand sanitizing is not as effective as hand washing, but we want that to be available throughout the day as well. The cost here is a little higher because, believe it or not, hand sanitizer is extremely expensive. But you'll see here an allocation for custodial staff that would rotate through a building over the course of the day. And then the cost for about twenty-five hundred wall-mounted sanitizer stations and then twenty-five hundred gallons of hand sanitizer as a, a start for those stations. We hear a lot about our facilities and we acknowledge that R P S facilities have been neglected over time. And so this remains a priority for folks, even though we know that, and again, as Dr. Avula shared, that the risk of surface transmission is low, we still want to make sure that our buildings are clean, safe, and disinfected. So the first thing is happening right now. All R P S buildings are being deep cleaned by external contracting groups. We talked about this at our last meeting. Of course, our custodians are there as well to ensure they're learning deep cleaning protocols. And this is just to set a, a solid foundation for the year. As Dr. Avula shared, this idea of daily deep cleaning in the same way may no longer be necessary. So this just brings us to a, a common starting place. We'll also, right now, the summer, ensuring double checking that all of our bathroom sinks, soap dispensers, paper towel dispensers are fully functional and, and fully stocked for the start of school year. And then those, those bathroom monitors that we talked about in the previous slide will do the monitoring throughout the year. Custodians will have clear protocols for daily classroom cleaning either before or at the end of day. And completion of these protocols, again, will be documented and posted so that folks can see what's happening and feel comfortable with completion. Teachers will receive cleaning supplies, whether that's wipes, for example, for doing what Dr. Avula talked about, cleaning those high-touch surfaces during the day as necessary. So wiping down a doorknob, wiping down desks, things like that. Classrooms with limited ventilation will receive a portable air purification system. We, while obviously many of our windows open, it's a way to help increase air quality, especially in those that don't. All of our water fountains are in the process of being shut off and will be for the first day of school. As we know that kids have a, a natural tendency of putting their mouth right there on the right there on the spigot of the water fountain. But we do have hydration stations in all of our buildings. And so students will use that to fill water bottles and/or cups. And we will pair those explicit handwashing breaks in the schedule with also water breaks. So you'll see the costs outlined. We have $1.5 million for the deep cleaning that's happening right now, about half a million for classroom cleaning supplies for individual classrooms throughout the year, money for the portable air purification systems, and then money for the little paper cups to go at the hydration station if someone did not have a water bottle. As you know, as part of Dreams for RPS, we know we have to have a licensed nurse in every building. And this year, through the board's commitment, we added five additional nurses to our nursing staff. However, as we continued conversations with the health department and looked at our staffing, we realized we simply were not comfortable moving forward without ensuring that there was a licensed nurse on staff in every school. And so we are proposing adding six more full-time nursing positions. This will ensure a minimum of one licensed nurse in each of our schools. And then based on size, some schools may have multiple staff. We are proposing that our nursing staff be paid to return to week one work, excuse me, one week prior to the return of staff and students for additional training related to COVID-19. And I've begun to see drafts of that professional development, and it's quite robust, being developed in partnership with the health department so that not only do our nurses feel equipped, but so do our teachers, our principals, et cetera. We had already allocated in the budget monies to ensure that our nursing suites are fully stocked prior to the start of school and can be maintained throughout the year. And this is just, this may be some things related to COVID, but it's also just ensuring that our suites have the basic things that they need to support student and staff health. And then finally, we'll be designating a quarantine space, an isolation space. You may have heard different terms. In each school, for any student or staff who either, A, well, only students who may exhibit a symptom when they came in the door, the fever, or the elevated temperature, or any staff member or student who might exhibit a symptom during the day. The nurses would be the ones to manage this space and to do additional assessments that they'll be trained to do through their training to determine if these, if multiple symptoms might suggest a possible infection. We know that many of the COVID-19 symptoms might be things that some of our students, unfortunately, just exhibit daily, like asthma, being confused for shortness of breath. And so that's, again, why we knew it was so important to have a licensed nurse on staff so that they could make those kinds of medical determinations. The cost for this bucket is about $1 million. Money for the additional nursing positions, additional training, the nursing suite supplies. And then I neglected to mention that we're explicitly adding money for a nursing sub-budget and actively recruiting to ensure coverage when needed. And then finally, we want to, while we're learning a lot, and there certainly are a lot of unknowns, we want to ensure that accurate medically-based messaging about COVID-19, that we're helping share that with the community. And so there are a couple of things that we're initially thinking of. Within buildings, posters in English, Spanish, and other languages where applicable based on student population will be hung throughout the building, sharing general information about COVID, some of those explicit handwashing protocols, reminders about physical distancing and map wearing. And videos on these same topics are being developed as well and will be shared via our normal platforms. These reopening plans and protocols will also be shared widely so that everyone knows what things are in place for their safety and health as well. We've priced this at about $5,000 per school for poster signage and such. And then finally, we are, of course, developing protocols related to things around safety and health. And that includes revisiting our current student attendance policy. While we love ideas of perfect attendance, we want people to stay home if they're not well. And so we want to make sure we're sending the right message. We'll be revisiting our staff sick leave policy, including ensuring knowledge about access to new federal leave related to COVID symptoms or caring for someone who may not be well. Having clarity around our return to work and return to school policies if you've either had symptoms or had a positive test. Thinking about ways that will limit non-essential visitors to, again, keep schools as their own bubbles or pods as much as possible. And then finally, considering both staff and student accountability for ensuring that these safety and health measures are in place. I'll stop there, Jason. I'm not sure if you want me to take questions on this or if let's go through and do them all.
Let's do it all.
Okay, great, thanks.
Thank you so much, Michelle. Really appreciate the work, very, very comprehensive. Now, section two will be about our academic plans, our return to learning plans. As we've discussed, we have Plan A and Plan B. Again, as I shared at the outset, that doesn't mean that there can't be a Plan C or D if, through our discussion, we come up with better solutions. But we did want to share these two options with the board and with the public this evening. And I'm going to throw it over to Tracy App, our chief academic officer, who has been leading this work. That, I'll turn to you, Tracy.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. As we share these plans, Mr. Kameras has previewed these in his RPS Direct. And we also received, you know, we presented some of these options based on survey data from both staff and families. So what we're putting forth today is our two plans that we think the survey data and the input we've received thus far seem the most, have the most folks feeling likely or most comfortable. Again, we expect this to evolve based on what we've heard this evening and what we'll hear throughout this evening's discussion and in the coming days. So Plan A is based on six feet of social distancing, which requires us to do a staggered schedule. This schedule, based on our survey data, we saw a significant number of families that would be very likely or likely to send their students to school in the fall with a alternating day. We'll call this a hybrid. So this is a couple of days in school and several days doing virtual learning. Additionally, we asked staff the same question. And you'll see, we saw a significant number of staff at the time comfortable and very comfortable implementing such a schedule. We also wanted to give families the option to choose a full virtual model. And you'll see that we had a significant number of families that said they were very likely or likely to choose that option as well. So Plan A has both a hybrid, what we call an alternating day schedule with some time in school and some time virtually, as well as a fully virtual option. To put this in a graphic form, if you were a family who opted for a full virtual path, you would log on and experience a virtual learning. I'll talk a little bit about how that looks in just a minute. But you would do that Monday through Friday. The hybrid path, and you would have a dedicated teacher for that, okay? So this is not independent, purely virtual, without any adult interaction. This, you definitely have a dedicated teacher who you are engaging with throughout the week. The hybrid path, students are split into, imagine essentially a section of students that are split into two. And so they alternate. Both groups are online or are virtual on Mondays, and then an alternating schedule every other day. While these students are in school with their in-person teacher, the students at home doing virtual learning would be doing what we'll call playlist-type learning. We'll get into that terminology in a minute. But this would be more self-directed, but still man, self-directed learning, but still managed through their assigned teacher. And then this plan also, and that allows us to have a scenario where a select group of students are able to go to school each day, increasing our ability to provide small group instruction or intervention for students who require that. I want to make a note here, particularly as we think about students with IEPs or 504s, or who are designated English learners. The learning, the IEP team and the IEPs themselves, for students with disabilities, as well as the language acquisition plan for students who are English learners, determines the services that students receive. So it would not be appropriate for us as a school division to put a blanket, to apply a blanket set of services to a student just by the nature of a particular label. And in fact, we'd want to be very thoughtful to ensure that decisions around services are really driven by the, collaboratively by the family who is, and the staff who are part of the IEP team, for example. So I just, I just sort of voiced this over again to reiterate. And in Plan A, there's a full virtual path. This is available K-12. We would not make this available to pre-K. In fact, we want to, it is our intention to find a way to do in-school all day for pre, in-school every day for pre-K, given the age of our learners. Virtual instruction will consist mostly of a live teaching in this scenario, synchronous teaching with teachers, as well as some pre-recorded materials and a use of online platforms. You heard some of those tonight in public comment. This would also include the hybrid path. So for families who select this choice, their students would have some time in-school in person and some time in virtual instruction. And we selected Monday as the virtual day for both of these groups, given the high number of holidays and teacher workdays that we, that are typically scheduled on a Monday. So this would hopefully not disrupt the alternating rotation. One of the limitations of this, of course, is, you know, we think about the health scenarios and the cleaning scenarios, but we feel like we would want to do that every day regardless. And then this also, as I shared, includes a full in-person path for select students, and in particular, students with certain intensive IEPs, very level-one English language proficiency, and all pre-K students. And again, families would decide, and in particular, in collaboration with the respective IEP teams, for example, which, which services make the most sense. Plan B is a scenario that we have added in light of the recent shift in the guidance released earlier this week from the Virginia Department of Health and the Virginia Department of Education. And that recommendation follows, I think, guidelines from the APA and are now indicating the three feet of physical distancing if everyone is wearing a mask. So if we were to craft the Plan B, we essentially eliminate the hybrid path from Plan A, which we had created initially to allow for six feet of social distancing. And this allows us to offer a full virtual path and a full in-person path. So that would be the only difference in this scenario. So the full virtual path is the same in Plan A and in Plan B. And the full in-person path would mimic a traditional school day. Of course, we would apply the health protocols and such. And we would apply all of the physical pieces that Michelle referenced earlier. If the families who wanted this path wanted more physical distancing than that would allow, we would certainly try to prioritize the highest needs students first. So there's a lot of different ways to describe what virtual learning is. And so for purposes of us trying to level set, we chose, we chose the following terminology. So for virtual instruction that is live, you might typically hear of this as synchronous. This is where a teacher is working with students in real time, sort of like what we're doing now, but hopefully much more interactive. And then playlist, and this is typically what you might consider asynchronous. It's also in the virtual setting. But this, we use this term to indicate when a student is working independently on instructional assignments that their teachers have selected and chosen. And this would typically include a pre-recorded video, followed by practice via, again, our instructional software like iReady or Reflex or Edgenuity. Think of this as RPS at home combined with a teacher of record who provides the feedback, adjusts the assignments, and grades them, and so on. So that when we think about a playlist setting, this is typically, in the hybrid scenario, students who were not, were, students would do their virtual day in a playlist-like setting. Some of the technology costs around this, we estimate about $500,000 for teacher stipends to create playlist content, even for our teachers who are delivering live instruction. As we've heard, you know, from our teachers very much, pivoting to virtual instruction requires a significant amount of work. And so we want to arm our teachers with resources. And so we would leverage our strongest teachers to help us create playlist content, hopefully before the school year starts or as soon as the school board makes a decision about which direction we're heading. And then we would also want to allocate about $200,000 for web support to host and manage a playlist online. We still imagine Google Classrooms being our primary platform. That was based on feedback and input we received from teachers and discussion over the course of the spring, but also even most recently with our summer school model. So we would want to just make sure we're dedicating time and energy to keep that all organized. Another term when we think about virtual instruction is blended. And this is a combination of live and playlist instruction. And so in a full virtual model, you're going to see, in a typical day, across a student's day or across a teacher's, you know, instructional period, you're typically going to see a blended example for students who are experiencing a full virtual experience. So this is what this might look like for elementary math. You know, in the morning, students, and when it's time for math, students log on to Google Classrooms. The teacher will have, you know, inserted a link, and they will jump on that link and listen to a live introduction of the lesson from the teacher. It might say, "Good morning, here's what we're going to be working on today." And then the teacher would queue up a video potentially of a pre-recorded instructional video from a playlist or deliver the instruction themselves. They would make that choice. After the video, the teacher would then lead the class through live guided practice with students responding through chat, orally and writing, maybe on, you know, white, flipping up a whiteboard with a dry erase marker. And then the teacher would assign students small group rotations, typically pre-developed in Google Classrooms. And she might say, "Okay, you know, the three of you, stay here with me. The other, you know, 10 of you, go ahead and log off and do these two things and log back on in 15 minutes, and we'll regroup and rotate." And then finally, everybody come back together in 30 minutes, and we will wrap up our lesson and talk about next steps. So for both Plans A and B, for families who opt for a fully virtual schedule for an elementary student, this is what a sample, and again, try not to this is what a sample, and again, try not to get too hung up on the times. Of course, we would need to stick to a schedule because this would be blended instruction and live instruction. So these are not the exact times we would propose for elementary, but just to give you a feel for the day. An elementary, a group of elementary students assigned to a class, their homeroom, would come together and have a morning meeting. They would then move into a blended version of ELA instruction. Again, remember, that's a combination of live and playlist. They would then do a playlist activity around physical education or brain break, come back and do math instruction in a blended format, take a lunch break. And then in the afternoon, we would alternate social science and science instruction through a playlist. Where students are working independently and the teacher is then pulling small group interventions for students who need additional supports. And again, they would have, you know, set these schedules up in advance. And then to close the day, there'd be an afternoon meeting to check in on how things went, troubleshoot any technology things, call attention to homework, et cetera. And then it confirmed that any independent work was uploaded and submitted, so that the teacher could provide feedback, et cetera. In terms, one thing you'll see missing here is our specials such as art and music. We definitely want to include that. We are, you know, this is, when you think about how to deliver this in a virtual environment, it's particularly challenging since you, you often need, you know, hands-on materials. So we're working with a variety of community arts organizations to support our efforts. We convened a meeting of about 13, there was a group of about 13 partners that came together with our Office of Engagement and our Office of Curriculum Instruction recently to try to really map out a set of opportunities and enrichment for families in the arts. So it may not be built into the actual, you know, eight to three school day, but we want to definitely make sure that there's a set of enrichment and arts activities available to any student who is in a full virtual model. The way the full virtual schedule for both Plans A and B for middle school is very similar. The difference being, you know, you have, you tend to have different teachers for each content area. And so you're, you would have your standard schedule, the way your, your middle school would schedule your courses. And you would go through your day with your teacher. You would log on at, you know, when like period one starts, period two, period three, et cetera, based on your schedule. And of course, we'd build in five, a five-minute virtual passing period to close out your English class. Five minutes later, jump on with a new, a different, your math teacher. Five minutes later, jump on with your science teacher and, and throughout the afternoon. And again, there would be a closeout to make sure that you've submitted everything to Google Classrooms and a, and a community cir, circle using our restorative practices led by your homeroom teacher. So you begin and end your day with your homeroom. And throughout the day, you're experiencing different instruction from your various teachers. And then for high school, again, in the, in the full virtual model, the same plan for A and B. What we're proposing here is something very similar to what I shared for middle school. We currently are on a odd-even year-long block. So that means currently, students in high school receive, they take eight courses all year long and they take four classes for 90 minutes a day every other day. What we're proposing, based on input and feedback from high school teachers and principals, is a four-by-four semester block. This would allow students to take four classes at a time and have teachers have fewer students that they're working with at a time. There would be a total of the same amount of credits over the course of the year. But by doing this every day, it allows us to keep instruction consistent and, and allow students to focus on a smaller set of content over the course of a full semester. The other thing to note about high school is there are certain courses offered at the technical center that just wouldn't be feasible in a full virtual model due to practicum or hands-on requirements. And a lot of these requirements are set, not just by the VDOE, but by state certifying boards. Like for, to get your CNA for nursing, you have to have hands-on nursing hours. That just may not be feasible in this environment. So we would want to make sure that students who opt for a hybrid path and, so if you opted for a full virtual model, there's still a lot of CTE courses that you can take, but there are some that just would not be available in this model, and we would certainly make families aware of that. Additionally, in Plan A, for students who chose the hybrid path and would want to take RTC courses, the hybrid path would allow them to do so because they would be in-person. But we would set up a schedule where they would spend the entirety of their in-person day at RTC. Currently, students go to their home, their homeschool for half the day and their RTC for half the day. That introduces, in this environment, that's a significant additional tech transportation complexity. Students would take their RTC courses, but they would also be able to take self-paced core content classes at RTC using a model like Edgenuity, for example. A sample hybrid schedule, so for Plan A only, I'll go through a couple of examples for each, for elementary, middle high here. This would be for your in-person day, as you can see, this looks like a fairly traditional school day. We've tried to build, I'll call out that we've tried to build in small group instruction or intervention along with small groups that counselors can lead for socio-emotional learning. So you could imagine the teacher and the counselor splitting the group, each of them taking half and then rotating so that we can do small group instruction and students can get some face time with counselors around socio-emotional learning. Similarly, for the virtual day, the difference here is instead of live or blended learning, students are operating off of a playlist or, you know, independent playlist where, again, they log on to their Google Classroom. The, the assignments have been, you know, assigned by their, their classroom teacher. Again, we as a school division would create content to enable teachers to create these playlists. We would have playlists pre-developed and then their teachers would decide whether to customize or modify them based on their pacing or et cetera. The students would log on to Google Classrooms and they would go through their playlist. Again, probably watch a video, do some independent work, take a brain break. And then we would do some live counseling sessions and/or small group instruction intervention. Again, these would be scheduled so students would know when to log on virtually and, and get these sessions with their counselors and with small group instruction. For middle school, the in-person day, for, to do the, the hybrid schedule for middle school, this would look a little different than a traditional school day where we have a modified block where you take all your core content every day and then you alternate electives every other day. That's currently what we do. We would, we are, this is something like this, it's what we call a double block modification. So you'll notice that students have a lot more time here for English language arts with personalized learning time or intervention built in. We would want middle schools to the extent that they're able to schedule students and teams to minimize the number of student transitions. So the teachers, this might change, given some of the information we received this evening. But we initially had thought that minimizing student transitions was ideal, but we might minimize teacher transition, for example. So students would have 90 minutes in math and English. And, and then for science and history, they would still get the same amount of instructional time, they would just be rotating their in-person time based on their alternating day. In this example, this student comes to school on Tuesdays and Thursdays. And similarly for their elective, so they still get 90 minutes. Typically, they get 45 minutes, you know, every other day. This way, they get 90 minutes within this week. Might be a little complicated to explain on paper, but that's how the rotation for in-person would work. And then if we go to the virtual day, similar to, it would follow your schedule, right? Because your teachers, I'm sorry, this is where your, your teachers that you spent your in-person day with, they are now teaching your, the other half of your classmates. So you would be doing your independent playlist based on what your teachers have pulled into Google Classrooms. Again, the idea here is not that teachers have to create all of this content by scratch by themselves. Remember, for K-8, we've adopted a pretty robust curriculum from organizations that have a pretty deep video library as well that, again, we would utilize that as well as with some of our, our teachers who are available this summer to create playlists to make this part of the planning process a bit more streamlined for any, for this type of virtual instruction. And then lastly, for high school, the sample hybrid, the in-person, again, follows a, what we call a four-by-four block. And the, the thing to note here, as you, as you may remember in the spring, in order for high school students to earn their credit for the courses that they were enrolled in, they had, we have to ensure that they demonstrate successfully completing a majority of the standards of the course. So there was content after March 13th that students did not get. So we created modules via Edgenuity and Performance Tasks. And many students have completed those. But some students have not completed those or completed all of those and they have an incomplete on their transcript. The idea is to convert the incompletes into a credit. But, so we'll, we are proposing for students who, you know, have not finished that work in the spring or during the summer session, that we would encourage students to stay for support to make sure they finish out that coursework so they can get that credit from last year and not have that, that incomplete following them. And then for virtual, again, this would be a playlist designed by their, their in-person teacher. Again, we'd have an extended virtual day here with virtual interventions and/or tutoring available on demand for students who needed time to complete their spring 2020 coursework. In terms of student accountability and support, in any scenario, we definitely want to monitor and track student attendance. And this, so this would be required as normal, whether that's a virtual or whether that's hybrid or fully in-person. And one of the best ways to do this is through the morning meeting via Google Classroom, but also through the work that students create and submit through Google Classrooms. In terms of grades and assignments and credits, unlike the approach we took last spring, which really was a short-term solve, students will be expected to complete all assigned work and they will receive grades for each marking period, teachers will grade students' work. Again, if you're a full virtual student, you'll have an assigned teacher, a full virtual teacher who would, will be your teacher of record. And for, if you're a hybrid, if you choose the hybrid model, you're, the teacher you see two days a week is also the teacher who will be monitoring your virtual work. And just to emphasize, for high school courses, the waivers that the state had issued earlier in the spring for 2020, that was a one-time situation, so students will need to pass their courses as normal to receive credit towards graduation. In addition, we want to create resource kits that students, so that students have the materials and supplies they need at school, rulers, graph paper, maybe, you know, flipboards for, for, you know, easy contributions. And so that cost would be, we anticipate about $500,000, $20 a kit for 25,000 students. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Tracy, I really appreciate that. As you can see, it's quite complicated and there's a lot of little details to figure out. Our next section is on staffing and I'm gonna go ahead and take this one. And so the, the first part of this is really important. And if anybody's watching at home, this is, this is the time to especially perk up and certainly the board as well. One of the principles that we outlined at the beginning was, was empathy. And we know that we have staff members who themselves are in high-risk groups. They have underlying health conditions or their age. And we know we have staff members of all ages and all health conditions that live with family members who have suppressed immune systems or other health conditions that make them very susceptible to COVID-19. And so for any of those individuals, they will have the option, no questions asked, to select the opportunity to work virtually, to work remotely. Or to work in-person, but with a modified schedule that keeps them away from, in essence, students and other adults. So an example of working remotely would be a teacher who provides virtual instruction full-time. An example of a in-person but modified schedule would be, for example, a custodian who only works in the evenings when no one else is in the building or only works outside on the grounds where he or she would not come into contact in any close proximity to another individual. And so I, I want to make this absolutely clear. No one is going to be forced to work when they are facing their own health issues or their family members or anyone they live with has conditions that would potentially put their health in jeopardy. And I want that to be absolutely clear. Now, folks who would be working remotely would still have a full tour of duty, they would just have that tour of duty at home. And then, of course, anyone who is actively ill, sick, whether it's COVID or anything else, of course, would have access to their sick leave and, and FMLA and special COVID-19 leave, which the federal government has provided. And one thing I did want to clear up is teachers, all staff, would not be required to use their leave if they needed to quarantine because of infection. That would be something that is no fault of their own. And if they had to go into that situation, then assuming they were symptom-free, they would then work virtually. So if a teacher had to be quarantined, but she was asymptomatic and felt fine, then she would just teach virtually, but we would not charge anyone leave for having to go into quarantine through no fault of their own. Once the school board adopts a plan, whatever plan that is, we will put out a process, an online process, similar to how we do contracts. Because we'll need every single employee to tell us if they want to exercise this health exemption or not. And so that we can work to figure out how many would exercise that, how many wouldn't. And of course, that will impact our ability to do in-person instruction. And so one big caveat of all of this is, you know, once we do pick a path and then we go to our staff to find out about any health exemptions and we go to our families to see which path they would choose, then there's going to be a point at which we have to reconcile those two things. And based on the survey data, I do think they will reconcile. We have a significant percentage of families who want to go virtual, which means we would have, you know, not everyone or nearly close to everyone coming in person. Likewise, we have a significant chunk of teachers who have said they would be comfortable coming in person, but we have a decent amount that, that would not be for health or other reasons. My hunch is it would work out, but if it didn't, for example, if 80% of teachers had a health exemption, somebody in, in their homes, and so they needed to work remotely, and 80% of our families wanted to come in person, obviously, we couldn't make that work. But I won't know that until we pick a plan and then expeditiously move forward with getting that information from, from all of our employees. So I did want to just note that caveat. I also wanted to note on the staffing side, as you I also wanted to note on the staffing side, as you may recall, we asked folks about their comfort level with teaching virtually or or service delivery virtually using video applications like Google Classroom and so on. And we're very pleased to see a significant majority indicated they were very comfortable or comfortable. And then we also asked how much professional development folks felt they would need on those kinds of platforms, from a half-day all the way to more than two days. And as you can see, there's a high degree of variability, though. About 60% of our staff were in the half-day or one day. So we're using this data to inform what the training would look like to have a tiered set of options for for our staff based on how much they feel that they need. And we have a cost here of $100,000 to support the training for that virtual teaching and virtual service delivery. We have another section, other considerations, that I just want to briefly touch on. These are still in the work, so they're not as detailed as the others. But we really wanted to focus on the health and safety and the academic and the staffing first. But we also obviously care very much about social emotional supports. And so we have a recommendation here about expanding our partnership with ChildSaver Scan, CIS, and RBHA to provide additional clinicians and specialists with a significant price tag of about $2.5 million. This is a one-time expansion. Obviously, we wouldn't be able to do this forever. But this is one of the things that we've designated in our CARES application that we'd like to use funding for. We also know we're likely going to need additional technology. We think it would be best to make sure every student in RPS has a Chromebook beyond the ones we've already given them to, because there are a lot of benefits to having everybody be on what's called our console, connected to our ability to instantly push out updates and security measures and access to all these virtual platforms, which we can do remotely and quickly with a Chromebook. If if kids are using other kinds of laptops or computers, it's a little bit messier. I have experienced this myself with my own two sons. We don't have a Chromebook. And sometimes it's a little bit funky with my computer or my wife's computer. And we're blessed that we have those. But it will be better for all kids if they're all on one system. So we're recommending an additional 8,000 Chromebooks. Also, we've, we've already purchased 250 laptops for staff who need them, but we're recommending an additional 250 for any staff members that would need them to do the virtual teaching. So you can see the cost here, the price tag for all of that. Transportation, this is highly contingent upon which plan the board ultimately selects. Obviously, the hybrid plan is a very different transportation burden than the straight virtual and straight in-person plan. We didn't cost anything out here because I would not recommend in any case that we attempt to purchase additional buses or anything of that nature. A, it's extremely expensive, and B, the time it takes to actually procure a bus and get it ready and all that is is months, and it wouldn't be ready for the start of school anyway. So really, whatever plan we choose, our recommendation is we have to use the fleet that we have, and we just are gonna have to modify times based on the capacity of our fleet. On food, a couple of notes. To the extent possible, all meals will be eaten in classrooms to avoid congregating large groups of students. We will continue to offer meal distribution for families who choose the virtual path. And obviously, the details of that depend a little bit on which plan we select, but we are doing thinking on that right now. We do not anticipate future additional food distribution costs, but we have already incurred during the closure about $1.5 million in expenses, which we had always planned to charge against our federal stimulus. So we're listing it here because it's still a cost that will draw down the federal stimulus. And so that brings us then to the overall cost and revenue picture. I just wanted to give the board and the public a sense of where things stand on that front. On the left-hand side, you have the costs for each of the categories we've discussed tonight. Health and safety at a little bit under $5 million. Academics, 1.2. Social emotional sports, 2.5 million. By the way, on the academics, I do want to note, we have a significant investments we've already made in the academics, which why it doesn't seem as high as maybe some of the others. Staffing, 100,000. Technology, we just discussed, the food and nutrition. There's a small other line for books to replace the books that I ask principals to give out when we close, and I promised them that I would replace their libraries, Ms. Owen. And so we wanted to set some money aside for that and some cots for the little ones. And then I know the board was concerned about having a reserve, and so I wanted to just build that in as well. All told, that comes to a little bit over 15 million. On the revenue side, you can see there our federal stimulus is now at about 12.5 million. As you may recall, it started at north of 13 million. But as private schools accessed that money, it has decreased by about $1 million. So how do we get from 12.5 million to about 15 and a half million? Well, I'm proposing a couple of things. One, I think we should consider doing a one-time reallocation of capital funds towards our COVID response and moving that into operating. We would have to go to council for that. But I think, given the once-in-a-lifetime nature of the situation we're in, that would be an acceptable step to take. Those are one-time funds, and we'd be using them for one-time matters. I also believe that, based on conversations I've had with foundations in the area, that raising another $1 million, we've already raised a million roughly for technology that we could raise another million. And so I think from those two sources, we could get to our 15 and a half million, which would not only cover everything in the presentation, but also that $2 million in reserve for the obvious unexpected events and costs that will arise. And that brings us to the end of the presentation. Again, let me just reiterate. Plan A and Plan B are the result of the collective wisdom of a lot of people working really hard, but they are by no means the only answers. I know we've heard a lot of public comment about just a 100% virtual option. I know we discussed with the physicians today, potentially more in-person for elementary and more virtual for secondary. You know, we are, of course, open to any ideas that that meet the principles, which are equity, empathy, and efficiency. And so with that, I'll conclude and glad to answer any questions that I can. You're on mute, Ms. Owen.
You will. Let me have my, there we go. All right, we have several people. Mr. Barlow, Ms. Burke, Ms. Dorr, Mr. Young, so far.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's no surprise, it's a lot, lots to cover and undoubtedly a very serious issue. So I appreciate the administration putting and and community members putting so much work into developing these plans. It's clear that a lot of thought's gone into them and a lot of effort as well. I do want to dive into some of what we have seen with these draft plans and to circle back a little bit to that discussion that we had earlier. But I, I think before we do that, the the core question that we need to discuss as a board is whether we do, in fact, go back to in-person instruction at the start of our traditional school year. And there's clearly been a lot of public interest and a lot of public comment. The REA has come forward with a position on it. And I I hope that we can start by having a discussion about whether we think it makes sense generally to move into one of these options with a substantial in-school participation approach starting at the next school year. I I for one think that we are better off with, at the, at the very least, with a delay of implementing the plans that do have a substantial in-person approach. Perhaps we could have some targeted intervention and support with high-needs students. But I I think we, we still have a lot of discussion to have as community. We're gonna be seeing a lot more data coming out in the near future. We're gonna be seeing what a lot of other school districts are doing and and what, what that looks like from a spread perspective. Because when, you know, when we're looking at some of the information that we received from the doctors we spoke with earlier, there really is limited information and limited data about what, what types of health impacts COVID may have, despite, you know, assertions that spread is is relatively low between younger students and adults. And I I still have some significant concerns there. And I think I'm sure other colleagues will be addressing some of the, some of the points related to some of the specifics of these plans and I may chime in with comments later. But I did want to be very clear, or I would like the administration to be very clear about the staff considerations here in particular. So the administration mentioned that staff with health-related concerns would not have to report with no questions asked and and could have a modified in-person or at-home tour of duty, so to speak. But I did want to make sure that, or I want to be, want to get a better understanding of the administration's take on what constitutes a health-related matter. So if a teacher
I can, I'll make it simple. It would truly be no questions asked.
Okay. Okay.
That's whatever a staff member, however they define it.
Excellent. Okay, cool. I'm glad to hear that. And the next thing I think that would be really helpful for us, especially as we continue to flesh out some more of these plans and approaches, is to probably issue another survey. I know a lot of effort went into the last one. But given that we're going to be having more iterations of these plans, and I think further discussion of a virtual start should be considered. I I think it would be helpful to get more staff input and family input on what we're seeing, especially as things continue to, to progress with with the virus. So at this point, I withhold further comment, but I'll probably chime in a little later as well.
Thank you, Ms. Burke, Ms. Dorr, Mr. Young, Ms. Page. So Ms. Burke?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The, I'm very pleased also, as Mr. Barlow just stated, to hear Mr. Cameras, the option that staff persons will, faculty and staff persons will have. Thank you so much for that. As we heard during tonight, during the public comments, as well as talking to people and listening to the, reading the emails, there are persons that have health conditions or just aren't feeling safe right now. So thank you so much for including that. I have a few questions. Most of my questions go back to Ms. Haddasco, health and safety. I like the walkthrough scanners. I've participated in that this past weekend, and it's quick. It looks like, I'm sure you know what it looks like, two movie cameras.
Yes.
So, yes, yeah, and very, very quick, very quick, very quick. In fact, it was an opportunity to check your purse as well as walk through the scanner as well. So thank you. Well, my question is, number one, in terms of the bus riders, if we do go back to school, temperatures will not be taken until the students get to school. However, students can get on the school buses that have temperatures. So that's, that's something that I'd like more information on. Because if they're just getting on the bus, how would the bus drivers driving the bus? So what, what would be in place for those children that may be sick that's on the bus, boarding the school buses on the way to school? That's number one. Say what?
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Okay, it's quite all right. And my other question is regarding the separate room for six, six students. Once someone is sick and is reported while they're waiting in the sick room or quarantine room or nurses, separate area or whatever, who's gonna mind to those students? I'm thinking in terms of elementary children in particular. So my question there is, well, now since Mr. Cameras has given us the breakdown of where the funds are going, I was thinking about maybe particularly in elementary schools, we would need to have nursing assistants. You know, it's hard to get, we're not the only school system. If we do go back, they'll be looking for nurses. Who isn't looking for nurses? Or nurses aides or nurses assistants? If there are any funds available to make sure in each school, particularly elementary, that there are nursing assistants. And the reason I'm asking that is be mindful also, there's medicine to be given. If a child's diabetic, so many other needs besides just COVID. So we're hiring new nurses, but we will, I'm afraid that we will be in a hard circumstance position, whereas not having enough nurses. So if we did have some nursing assistants, that would help. I know in the past, if you didn't have, if a nurse was out and it didn't have a substitute, a nurse would travel from one school to the other. And basically, that was just to give out meds. But if you have other situations going on during the day, I would like to see very much the opportunity to hire nursing assistants. If there's no more than a few that would travel from, maybe each district would have, South Side would have one, North Side, Western, just to any event something happens that you have somebody Johnny on the spot. My other question is regarding the water cups. Now, with for elementary level, that's going to be a challenge. Because are they to drink the water there at the fountain from with the cup? Or they're supposed to take the cups back with them to their classrooms? And I'm asking if there's a possibility of getting water bottles. Sometimes companies give them to you. And we used to use them for field day. And of course, a child would have his name written on the bottom or on the side with a permanent marker. But the use of the cup's water will be on the floor. Somebody can slip, which means you have to have a custodian or crew person or the teacher again there to wipe up to keep from accidents happening. But the little, little cups, I'm very, 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 very concerned about that safety-wise. Okay, so those are my questions regarding health and safety. Then I had a couple regarding academics. Should I keep going?
Why don't we let Ms. Haddasco address those?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Burke. So the first one, you mentioned the bus, is one we spent a lot of time thinking about. Because I will admit, initially, we did think about taking the temperatures as someone got on the bus. What ultimately became the the decider there is what would happen to a child who did have a temperature? We would, we couldn't get them back home safely. Maybe their parent has already left for work. And again, as we thought about safety of our kids first, we wanted to be sure that, especially if they were scared, if they had a fever, that we were able to help take care of them. So you are exactly right. And one of the things I think that the medical team said, there is no plan with zero risk. But we did make the the decision that being able to have a licensed professional be the one to assess the child and then be able to contact a parent to pick up was the choice that we would make against those two hard choices. For the the isolation room, the idea would be that the the licensed nurse would, would staff that or to sit with the child until the the parent came or the caregiver came. You're exactly right, though, about the nursing assistants. We do have some right now, and they would do exactly what you talked about. Double down in schools with greater numbers, float if an Double down in schools with greater numbers, float if an issue came up at one school where additional coverage was needed. And our sub pool would hopefully be able to support that as well. But could we always use more nursing staff? Absolutely. It's why it's been such an important part of our strategic plan and why this is the only place you'll see in this entire proposal where we are proposing adding staff. Because we just felt it was that, that important. And absolutely, we could pivot the dollars that we put towards cups to water bottles. So yeah, totally open to that. It's more economically friendly, environmentally friendly, anyway.
And there may be some companies that will give us water bottles.
Yep.
There may be some companies that will give that to us.
Yep, I'll look into that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Burke, now your others.
Thank you. I just have one other for Dr. F. How many students per se would you, are expected to be in a group? We haven't, did we ever state how many students would be in a group? That's my first question.
Ms. Burke, are you talking about in the hybrid model?
Yes, yes.
So I think ultimately it will depend on numbers. But our thinking is, you know, if you think, think of a traditional elementary classroom that has between 18 and 20 students, I think maybe five of those, basically, if we use the same ratios from the survey, five of those might opt for virtual, which means you have 15 left. And so that would maybe split into two groups of one group of seven, one group of eight. That might be a little fewer if you have students that are getting pulled out for smaller, intensive services.
Okay, I was thinking.
Is that the question or?
So there's no cutoff? I'm thinking more because sometimes fourth and fifth grade classes, you may have 25 students. So I was thinking, would it be one to 12 ratio or one to 10 ratio? And I'm just seeing more than seven or eight.
I mean, I think, I think our, the ideal of the hybrid model, the, the intent of that is to get greater physical distancing. So we would want to cap that. As you can imagine, the, the, the size of our classrooms do vary by building.
Yeah.
Pretty significantly. So I think we'd want to start on the lower end of, you know, eight. And then depending on how the numbers or the, or the, or the space shakes out, we might be able to adjust that up or down. But I would, I think in the, the eight to 10 range is, is kind of the ballpark. How does that, does that?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was distracted for a minute. So my question, my next question regarding that is, if a parent has chosen in the beginning of the school year to have a virtual model, then changes after a month or two, maybe he or she feels more comfortable with the child returning to school, then would that be, would that, they would be in favor of the hybrid model, let's say, for example? Could that be addressed? Can they make that change? Or once you sign up for virtual, you have virtual until this subsides or whatever?
Well, I think overall, you know, I think we'll continue to think, as, as we get new information, we may have to pivot ourselves, right? But assuming this, one of these models goes, assuming one of these models we talked about is what we adopt. We did discuss that, and there's no one right answer. I think it would be, depending on, it's a numbers question. I think it would be more easy for a student to go from hybrid to a virtual. And essentially, we would treat that like transferring a classroom to come, I guess, either way we could do it, we would have to treat it as a, you're, you're almost changing the teacher assignment for the student, because it's two different instructional days and models. So I think it wouldn't be, it wouldn't necessarily be difficult, too difficult to go from hybrid to virtual. But if this numbers, if there's not space to move into a hybrid or in-person, that, that would be the factor that would limit parents' ability to do that. I think we'd want to try to accommodate. But given them, I will say, you know, we're trying to maximize empathy. We're trying to about with efficiency and limit complexity. But I, we want to honor that circumstances may change for families. So our intent would be to try to figure that out if, if we could manage the complexity.
And my last question is regarding, things happen. And I know we're talking about having substitutes. But is there any leeway or any opportunity where we could have in place? I'm, I'm talking about money again, Mr. Cameras. Anyway, and being realistic, things happen. Teachers can be on their way to school in the morning and have a car accident that has happened. Make it to school hour or two late. Who's going to keep the class? Right now, well, the, let's say, last school year, you could stood the class up or someone else could hold the class. But right now, it's all hands on deck. So I'm very, very, very much concerned about there being someone in place. I love the idea of children staying together with that homeroom teacher and with that same pod per se or bubble or whatever. But my concern is, you, when we bring in other persons as well, we don't know what else is going to happen on that end. So, you know, who's, who's going to end up keeping the children? Something to think about.
Yeah.
I'd like more information on that. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Dorr, then Mr. Young, then Ms. Page.
Madam Chair, I have three questions, and then I have a couple of requests. So if you permit me, I'd like to ask the three questions and then follow up with the request.
Okay.
My three questions, question one is, in option A, are we, so would it be, one teacher would be teaching both pods? So if it was an in-person teacher, would that person be teaching Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday? And do we have, does that really mitigate our, I know the six feet mitigates our risk, but it does expose that same teacher to the same number of students as it would in a fully in-person option? So that's question one. Question two is, have we had any guidance from the VDOE about seat hours and SOL requirement? And is there anything that we as a board can do? I think it would be, I think it's ridiculous to think that we should have SOLs next year, but I'd be interested in my colleagues' thoughts on that. But, you know, from a lobbying perspective, you know, what, what do we need to be doing? And then three, my third question is on recess and play. The more that I've, I've read a number of articles about sort of the social and emotional learning supports for our kids. And these schedules are very structured, which I understand we need to, we would need to do if we went in person. But I do, would be interested in the administration's perspective specifically around keeping kids active and moving and making it, making it fun even in, in these circumstances.
Thank you, Ms. Dorr. I can take us to have a couple of those. I'll start with the last one first. I think one of our greatest opportunities with all of this is to see this as an opportunity for instructional innovation. And, you know, we've heard our teachers express how much they're going to need to change the teaching. And so I do think this is a real opportunity for us to think, you know, more deeply about and taking some, you know, more instructional risks. And, and so getting, we want to encourage that creativity while I'm not creating a burden for teachers or putting them at, or students at risk. But I definitely support the idea of mixing things up. We did try to build in, you know, in the in-person days, there's, you know, physical education or movement every day. But I even think within the structure of the class, if there's more space, there's potential for more, for, for more innovative instructional choices. The, in terms of the, the hybrid and who is teaching when, in the, in option A, in the hybrid, again, I think there, there's an assumption here that based on the data, roughly 40% of your class may have opted for a full virtual. So that group will, so our, the number of in, in-person or in-person hybrid would be further reduced from maybe a traditional class size. So if a middle school, let me just use the middle school example. If I see, if I have five sections of 20 kids that I see over the course of the day, traditionally, that's 100 students, maybe 40 or 30 of those students opt for a full virtual. So now my, now my full teaching load for my kiddos, if I'm an in-person teacher, is 60 students split out over, you know, two days. So my section size might be, you know, 12 or 10. But again, some of this just depends on how the numbers break with families. Does that make, does that answer your question?
I mean, I think we'll, lot more to, more to come on that, but.
Sure. And then there was a, there's another question I think I missed.
Do we see hours in SOL?
Oh, yes. So right now, there have been no waivers on that as it relates to seat hours. However, remember, we do have a policy, that this board adopted a policy that allows us to provide credit and to demonstrate credit in alternative scenarios outside of the seat hour time. But more broadly, I was actually discussing this with my team today. Wherever the school board lands, I think one of the next steps will be to evaluate that, that decision against any waivers or, or adjustments that we may need to make from the state or to flag, that's just not, you know, going to be an exception, an acceptable option. Again, the state is constantly updating its guidance every week as, as, as things evolve. But we do have some things that I think we could address from a local policy perspective. For example, if we went through the four-by-four block with high school, we would have to likely adjust, we would potentially want to adjust when we do our official class rank policy, for example. So I think we want to look at our policies and see if there are any adjustments or suspensions of a local policy that you'd want to make. On the SOL side, the, the, the state has not made a decision about spring SOL testing. But I, and I would turn to Mr. Cameras to validate. I think there's, Michelle, do you want to talk about the accreditation?
Yes, and, and actually, the state did just actually release the spring dates just last week. So they have finalized those. Liz, I actually just sent you the dates, and I can share it with the board broadly. Now, they are talking, as Tracy was mentioning, about still reviewing the recommendation of their accreditation committee and whether or not accreditation would be waived again this year. But as it stands now, the VDOE is stating SOLs will happen this year, most likely because they're looking for the baseline year for growth for two years out. But to your point about advocacy, it's certainly something that since the decision has been made, it would require advocacy, I'm sure, at the state level for modifications to such a decision.
Your, your vote in November at the federal level will likely have more of an impact on the SOLs than any state advocacy, because the federal government requires annual testing under the Elementary and Secondary Education Act. The SOLs are the manifestation of that. So Dr. Lane can't get rid of state testing if there's no waiver from the federal government. So I just want to clarify.
And could I just add one small point on this? I do want to encourage a distinction between high-stakes testing for accreditation or ratings versus the assessments that provide teachers valuable data. I was on a call with our teacher advisory committee today, you know, asking them for input about what kind of diagnostic data would, will they feel that they want right from the jump? Because we know that, you know, we know that students not only have a summer slide, but now have had a COVID slide. And not all students have had the same learning opportunities in the spring. And so, you know, our teachers, while I, I'm not saying our teachers want massive testing, most teachers will tell you they do need data to inform their instruction. And, and, and understanding where students are, are learning against the standards is an important data point for, for many of our teachers. So again, just a distinction between assessment for learning versus sort of assessment for broader, high-stakes purposes.
Okay.
Super helpful. So, so just a couple of follow-up requests. I would be interested in seeing a third plan that incorporates some of our learnings from tonight about pre-K through age 12. It seems like, it seems like having a different approach for elementary, middle and high school is something worth exploring. So I, you know, to the extent there's consensus around another plan, I would, I would be in support of that. I would, I'm very interested in what the, our experts have to say. I know it wasn't to do on the HVAC, but I think there's an open question there. And I do think that that might be an unforeseen cost that I want to make sure we don't lose track of. I would support, as Mr. Barlow said, a resurvey. And I'm disheartened to hear that our stimulus money has been caught by private school requests. And I would offer my support in advocacy for making sure, one, it doesn't get any lower, if that's possible, and two, some advocacy around preserving or, and or getting some of that money back. So I would welcome guidance from the administration on the best way to do that. And then finally, this is a small request, or not a small request, but a couple of teacher requests. One, there's that awkward 94-minute RTC transition block. And so if we're going to be changing the schedule anyways, a request to make sure, make that an actual class, so that it's not a weird 94-minute of time. And additional, a couple of teachers texted about wanting some additional Aspen training if there's new requirements there.
Ms. Owen, may I ask a question?
Yes.
I, I think Mr. Barlow raised an excellent point, and it's related to what you just shared, Ms. Dorr, about, you know, a third option where we could do elementary and secondary. Absolutely. I think one of the gateway questions for the board is, is there an appetite for any in-person instruction? Because we've now done so much work, we can almost like put different pieces together. Like if you, tomorrow, I could give you the elementary and secondary proposal, because we would just pull the in-person stuff for the elementary and the virtual for the secondary. Like, we can move all the pieces around. I think the core question that we have to grapple with is, is there an appetite for any in-person instruction on September 8? And if the answer to that is no, then that is helpful to, to hear. Because then we can quickly shift to a full virtual approach and plan for a future phasing in of in-person. But if the answer is, no, we do think some in-person makes sense, then it kind of shifts us in a, in another direction. And so one of the things I would ask, i- if there are other bits of information or that would help the board come to some consensus on that question, I would love to know that. Because, look, I can, I can make the argument both ways. You know, you know, particularly for, for younger kids and for our most vulnerable kids, it is unequivocal that they will do worse off with virtual. Everything I've learned in my 25 years and certainly over the last four months convinces me of that. That being said, as you can all imagine, or not imagine, as you realize from the last hour and a half of discussion, in-person is complicated and it's expensive, and there's complexities, and it's hard. And there is not, there is no in-person plan that has zero risk. It does not exist. So we would be accepting some amount of risk for, for students and for, for staff. So if there are things, and, and, you know, look. So if there are things, um, and, and you know, look, we could put out another survey. I will tell you, it will take two to three weeks to get a response rate that I think would be, you would feel comfortable acting upon. And that's just the reality. So, um, so yeah, so how, if you can kind of help us think through what else, what other information would you need to make that gateway decision? And then we can begin to, um, piece it all together.
Okay. Mr. Young?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, and, uh, thanks to the superintendent, to all my colleagues and everybody who's, uh, participated in discussion this evening. So the answer for me is yes, absolutely. I think for all the reasons that the, the doctors, uh, addressed a couple of hours ago, it's really important to resume, resume in-person. And, uh, and I want to begin by conveying, uh, like, uh, my colleagues before me, my gratitude and, uh, and enthusiasm for providing an opportunity for teachers to self-identify as high-risk and opt-out to teach virtual. I think that that candidly, I think that that is, uh, and, and not unlike what the doctor spoke to earlier this evening is perhaps, uh, one of the most important elements. So, uh, so I'm very, very pleased that, uh, if I can infer from, uh, what I've heard from my colleagues that we'll be doing that going, going forward. And, uh, again, thank the superintendent team for recognizing how important that, that variable is. And, uh, and like the conversation that just adjourned, I really do think that it's important to introduce a third option or a Plan C. Uh, I, uh, I look forward to my colleagues wing in as relates to consideration of a third plan that would be comprised largely of, of Plan A. But for, uh, but for elementary school, for again, at the risk of belaboring the point, uh, so many of the reasons that, uh, the doctors spoke to. Uh, but for elementary school would include an option for five, for five days in the, in the classroom. I still anticipate, like we all do, that there will be a lot of our elementary-age students, like all of our K-12 students, who will choose the virtual option instead, uh, reducing, uh, reducing density. Uh, but then would also allow for families that, uh, would prefer the on-day, off-day. Uh, so it's a little, arguably a little bit more complicated. But, uh, but I do, I think like everyone on this call, uh, have serious reservations as it relates to virtual learning for our youngest students. And, uh, and I, I'm unsure that, uh, I'm unsure that is well-intentioned and as heck of a platform as, as we can construct. Um, our students won't suffer, uh, because of absence of in-person, referring to our, our youngest students. So I would, so in a few words or less, uh, this is my advocacy for us to, uh, yes, resume in-person, uh, provided all the opt-outs that were, uh, are included in the plans. But that we would also introduce a, a third option or Plan C uh, that, uh, would include a five-day in-person option for elementary school students. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Young, Ms. Page, then Mr. Barlow, Ms. Gibson, Ms. Cosby.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, yes, this, we have received, discussed. We've heard a lot from the administration, the medical experts. Still, there's a lot of information to process, debrief. But my question, I would like to see, and I heard it, Superintendent, all virtual option, what does that really look like? A robust virtual plan and a phased-in in-person? You know, with a phased-in in-person? Because I've heard from several parents, they're not certain about sending their children back to school. So that's, um, my request. Also, I want to know the training that you, that you, um, did you mention in your presentation? What is, um, the timeline, estimated timeline to complete the training that the teachers will have to participate in? To, to be prepared to, um, provide the virtual learning?
I can, can I answer, would you like me to answer that? So one is, we are, we are, um, working to kick off just a summer, you know, we're working on our next round of summer series professional development as just opt-in around people who want to get a jumpstart on Google Classrooms or, um, virtual techniques. We certainly, um, so we're looking to kick that off in late July, um, as an opt-in. But then we certainly will have, um, uh, sessions available during pre-service around, um, different levels of, uh, usage and proficiency with Google Classrooms, how to design and deliver virtual instruction, uh, how to build relationships with students virtually. And, um, how to, um, for leaders, um, what does it look like to think about instructional coaching and support in a virtual environment?
So I guess it's now July. Would there be enough time for everyone to complete the necessary training? To be prepared for?
I mean, I think the benefit, the benefit of the environment we're in is that virtual webinars have become, uh, virtual professional development. Um, people have gotten very good at that in very short order. And there's lots of different partners that we can work with to turn that around. I, I do think you speak to a broad, and again, we, we will, it's definitely a priority for our pre-service days. You do speak to, I think, the, the broader ta- uh, tension here, which is we want to be, you know, fully detailed, outline every contingency and scenario. Um, but as Mr. Cameras pointed out, there are some gateway questions that can help accelerate, um, our planning so that when the board does, you know, uh, gives us the green light, um, we're ready to run with the plan. But that there is a natural tension in terms of time, um, that is, is just the reality of where we are.
Okay. And then, um, another question.
All right.
For students. Um, as far as their participation. So we have students that are not participation, participating. So what is the plan? How, what is the plan to attract those students that we know are not participating in the learning process?
Um, so, uh, I think we've learned a lot. First, um, uh, different than the spring, which when we had different, uh, you know, expectations for virtual learning. The, as we outlined, the expectations are that students could, will come to school either virtually or in-person. And the teacher records that attendance. Um, and so if a student was, and, 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 you know, monitors that engagement, monitors that participation, the completion of assignments. And we would treat, uh, the teacher would flag, I think, for the same attendance work that we do in-person, we would figure out how to translate that, um, to a virtual environment to where, um, if, if it meant, you know, the teacher would start by calling the parent or family. And, and we would, we would, I would imagine we would enter, um, utilize our existing interventions around attendance, um, even if a child is not, you know, showing up virtually, if you will. I will also say we're learning a lot. Um, we're just about eight days into summer school. And if you talk to some of our summer school teachers and summer school parents, it gives you a flavor of what we imagine for the virtual blended learning um, and the engagement that teachers are taking on. And some, a lot of those teachers have received some of this training already. Um, and that includes monitoring, you know, student engagement and participation, filing up a phone call if a student doesn't show up virtually, et cetera. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Barlow, then Ms. Gibson, then Ms. Cosby.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, and I appreciate the superintendent re-centering the conversation a little bit about the, uh, virtual versus in-person start. I think no matter, uh, which way we move forward with it, we need to be very clear about what a decision-making framework will look like for us as a board and for the school division with respect to opening and closing. So, um, I'm not optimistic enough to, to think that we're necessarily going to see, um, continued reductions in day-to-day infections in the Richmond area. I certainly hope that's the case. But, uh, you know, when speaking earlier with, with the doctors, there was some suggestion that we may not want to shut down a school in the event of an infection or one infection. We may, uh, need to, um, to do some contract tracing and things like that. I want to make sure that we're preparing for, i- if we do move to an in-person approach, that we're preparing for what a building closure looks like if necessary, uh, what a decision looks like, um, for the entire school division to have to pivot if things get demonstrably worse in, in Richmond and in Virginia. And we have to close after reopening, um, what that transition looks like for our schools. And, and I also think that, that we should be, um, starting with a virtual approach and then using that kind of framework, um, moving forward into the school year to, to determine whether we feel comfortable moving, um, or opening up, uh, more broadly. So, uh, I, I think a lot of this, you know, whether the board makes a decision on a virtual start or not, I think a lot of this will be, a, a lot of our approach will be dictated based on uh, whether our families opt into it and perhaps, um, more importantly, whether our teachers, uh, determine on an individual basis or collectively that they intend to, uh, to return to, to our schools, um, in person. So, um, it may not, uh, entirely be within the control of the board and senior leadership of what, uh, our reopening scenario looks like if we see a lot of teachers opting out. Um, and with that in mind, I, I would also like for us to, to have some discussion about, um, how we, when, how, how we can possibly, and it's premature at this point, but how we can possibly move forward to an all-in-person approach post-COVID or as things really do calm down. And I know that's a lot to, um, to keep on top of. And, uh, in addition to, you know, a, a list of questions I have about, um, about what in-person instruction looks like. So, uh, I would encourage us to, uh, try to set up a regular, um, work session as a group or as a committee to continue to, uh, discuss these issues on a week-to-week basis. Um, because I do think that this, uh, this, this opening and this approach really does require a, a lot of thought and discussion as a board. So I'm not sure if, uh, that there would be a lot of appetite with that with all board members. But I do think that it, it warrants, um, a high level of, uh, discussion. And, uh, it's pretty tough to facilitate that within the confines of, uh, standard meeting.
All right. Thank you. Um, Ms. Gibson, then Ms. Cosby, then Ms. Burke.
Thank you. Um, thank you, Madam Chair. I, I want to start by saying that, um, you know, uh, Mr. Cameras asked, you know, whether there's an appetite to, um, to consider in-person, an in-person plan. And I, I think that the question really isn't whether or not we're open to in, in-person learning. The question is really when? You know, absolutely I want our students back in school. Do I think that we can accomplish that on September 8th? No. We just, we just, we're just not prepared. You know, I couldn't adequately prepare for this meeting, uh, because we received, uh, the, the proposal, the, the presentation 33 minutes before, before we started. Um, so am I confident that we can pull off a incredibly complex logistical plan in not even two months? No. We haven't yet gotten an update on the bathroom blitz. You know, we have schools that have very few working sinks. So do I think that we can repair all those sinks in a couple of months? No. We don't have full-time nurses in every school. And, um, this is something that I pushed for in our budget process again and again. And, um, and what I was told is that it's too hard to fill these jobs, that even if we budgeted, budgeted for them, we still wouldn't be able to fill those positions. So do I think that we can fill those positions in six weeks? No. You know, we, as a district, have had a hard time following through on, um, on, and addressing very complex issues, you know? I mean, it took a year to address the transcript issues. And, um, and so, you know, I, I, I think that we need to consider the fact that, um, you know, that, that there's, unfortunately, I mean, I, I really do think that this should be a, a, a decision that's made at the state. And, and I'll be frank, I think that there is, um, uh, a certain amount of disinterest in, in, in taking on that liability. And so this decision has been pushed down to us. And so here we are, um, making decisions that I think really should be regional, larger, larger decisions. And I think that we need the resources and the support to be able to pull this off. And we're not, we're not getting it. So, you know, yes, as everyone said, we're, we're in a lose-lose situation. And, um, and I'm kind of tired of hearing from folks like, I don't envy being in your position. Because yeah, there's no, this is, this is like, we're the, you know, at the end of the rope and we're stuck making this decision and there's, there is no good choices. And, um, and, you know, we have long been trying to get the funding that we need to, to address our schools. And now all of a sudden, the country's like, oh, wait, if we don't have schools in session, the economy is a mess. Got to get it going. Well, you should have thought about that, you know, uh, uh, a, a couple of years ago. So, um, I, I'm, you know, when I read the, the, the article or the, you know, that the, the, uh, state was changing its requirements from, from six feet to three feet, I was appalled. You know, I mean, that's, three feet is not social distancing. That's just like, that's just my personal space, you know? So the notion that, um, you know, we're going to keep our students safe in the buildings without, uh, as long as they're wear, like, they're going to wear masks for eight hours a day. And, um, you know, and, and in our buildings where you can't open the windows and the AV, you know, the, the HVAC systems are a mess. I mean, there's just, we've got a lot of work to do to figure this out. And as a board, we should be talking about the liability that we're taking on. And so my suggestion is that the board, we start by looking at our calendar, our school calendar. And, um, and, and look and see, okay, uh, you know, this is going to be our, our plan until this date. And then we can make a decision to revisit. Um, and in the meantime, let's figure out some, uh, you know, ensure that whatever, uh, virtual, uh, approach that we have in place, um, is as robust as it, as it needs to be and, and that it works. I think that if, if Google Classroom is the system that we're using, I think we should, you know, uh, have some type of presentation and ensure that, um, that it's able to support what we need from a, uh, classroom management and, and kind of managing all of the, the coursework that would be coming through. Um, I, I, I think it's important to talk again about the curriculum. Um, you know, how is this curriculum going to be implemented in this virtual approach? And, um, and what does that planning look like? And what, you know, what are the technology needs? I mean, I think that, you know, regardless of the plan, for most of the plans we're looking at, there's going to be some virtual component. And so, you know, I, I think we really need to get that right. And, um, and, uh, do I think that it's, uh, that, you know, from an academic standpoint, there is no question that this isn't, this isn't ideal. But ultimately, there is nothing more important than the safety of our students and our staff. And, um, I'm, I'm discouraged by the fact that- And I'm discouraged by the fact that we had spent a lot of time talking and asserting that, you know, well, you know, kids aren't as much at risk when, you know, I mean, we've got, you know, thousands of teachers in the district. And, you know, the logistics in figuring out, well, which teachers are too vulnerable and they'll be in school and then these ones. And then you've got a kid that, you know, they're going to school two days a week. And how, I mean, it's, we just, I don't know how we could pull this off right now, honestly. And so, I think that we, so the question is, when are we ready to go back to school? I'm ready once I see a viable plan and I, and a timeline on when we can realistically get some things accomplished that should have been done a very long time ago. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson. Ms. Cosby?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, like everyone on this, in this meeting and all of our people who are watching, you know, it's just, I'm so anxious. I will agree, I do like, I don't think that we're prepared right now for in-person. And it pains me to say that because I think about this COVID slide that our kids are experiencing and it's, anyway. I would like to see us, you asked the question, what additional information is needed? And for virtual instruction, I do want to get more information on what my colleague, Ms. Page, talked about. How do we ensure that our students are engaged? And if we can get more information on just that virtual platform? Because, yes, we know that many, many students were not engaged. And even when students are engaged, how do we make sure that it is a, that the instruction is robust and meaningful for them? You know, I mean, I know personally, me, I don't do well with virtual instruction. I don't, I need to be face-to-face, I just, you know, so, in-person. So, I do want more information on that. And if we look at starting off virtually, definitely to have a plan on when ideally we think we can be in-person. So, if we say we want to start off the first three months virtually and then, you know, come January, we want to make sure that we're in place for in-school, in-person, in-the-building instruction, what would that look like? And what are some of the things we have to make sure we get in place? So, anyway, so that's my main concern. Virtually, if we continue with virtual instruction, just making sure that we have a very strong platform and really fleshing out, how do we make sure that we can adequately monitor and make sure students are engaged?
All right, thank you, Ms. Cosby. Ms. Burke?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can you, okay, thank you, Madam Chair. I have one question and then I'd like to make a motion, if I may. Okay, my question is, this may have already been, I'm just looking back at my notes. Dr. Epp, where is Dr. Epp? Okay, there you are.
I'm here.
Did we, did you address resource teachers? What their role would be during the course of the day? And the reason I'm asking is, looking back at the presentation, I didn't see any place for, with a hybrid piece, a place for a teacher to have a break or planning? So, was that, was that included in that?
Well, we didn't, we didn't, we do have sample teacher schedules to go along with each of those, but the presentation was getting quite extensive. And so, but the teacher, so planning time is definitely built into the schedule.
Okay.
And two, there is a specials or elective period built into the hybrid in-person day as well as the full in-person day. And then, throughout the day, additional, we have, you know, additional staff, be they interventionists or instructional assistants or other folks. And the scenario A, they would be working with small groups for small group instruction intervention. Our ESL teachers would certainly be working with ESL learners at different times throughout the day or our exceptional education teachers. So, the in-person days would, the idea is to really maximize students' time with, you know, in front of teachers, including all of the instructional staff in the building.
So, they, art, music, and PE teachers would not teach those subjects?
Well, no, there's a specials period built in for the.
Okay, okay, okay.
For the, for the virtual days, we named that for the arts and music. For elementary, that's a little more challenging to do virtually. And so, we have some, we have, we were working with some community organizations to outline some virtual enrichment opportunities for specials, for arts and music during the virtual days.
All right, thank you. And Madam Chair, in lieu of the time and our agenda, I'm going to make a motion, but I want to discuss it. We'll share with you first what I'm thinking of with the Richmond Public Schools, Richmond Police Department. And I did read over the notes in our board docs and JCT. I'd like to make, I am making the motion, a motion, that those two items be addressed on our meeting on next week, Tuesday, July 14.
Okay, is there a second to the motion?
Second.
All right, so Ms. Burke made the motion, Ms. Page seconded. And they are saying that we will remove 2.03 and 2.04 to next Tuesday's meeting. Is there discussion? All right, Ms. Wilson?
Okay, the motion again is to defer item 2.04.
I can't hear you.
I'm sorry, the motion again is to defer items 2.04 and 2.05 to the July 14th meeting. Ms. Door? Ms. Door?
Yes.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
And Ms. Owen?
Yeah.
Motion passes 8-0.
All right. I do not see any further chat about our school reopening. I, I will tell you, Mr. Cameras, that I think we should have the option. I have a lot of families that want to do that, to go back to school. And we had a lot of teachers that were comfortable with that as well. I think matching it all up is going to be really complicated. I will also say this to my colleagues. We need to make a decision as soon as possible. Our families want us to do that. Whether we go virtual or do a hybrid or whatever we do, we really need to make this decision so that the planning can really commence, that families can make decisions. So, I'm hoping we can do that next Tuesday. All right, moving on to 4.01, receive for a second read and action, revisions to policy 8-2.2, admission. Is this Ms. Udesko or Ms.?
Yes, or Ms. Janelle. But, I can go. We brought this at the last meeting. Neither Janelle nor I received any feedback on the policy. As a reminder, this creates new options for residency documentation and greater clarity around some of our residency policies.
Okay, is there any discussion? Oh, is there a motion to approve these revisions?
So moved.
All right, that was Mr. Barlow. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Burke seconded, all right. Now, is there any discussion? It's late, I'm tired, okay? No? All right, then, Ms. Wilson?
Give me one second, my computer is moving very slowly right now.
It's sleepy too, huh?
Well, it's not working. All right, give me one second and I will get some paper and a pen and do it that way.
All righty.
Thank you.
Excuse me, please.
And so, the motion was made by who again, I'm sorry?
It was made by Ms. DeBarlow and seconded by Ms. Burke.
Thank you. And no discussion, so we're ready for the vote, Ms. Door?
Yes.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
And Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Motion passes 8-0.
All right, thank you. Now, our next item is 4.02, receive for action a contract over $250, $250,000 for Smart Labs for the STEM Academies. Is there a motion to approve this contract?
So moved.
Second.
And Ms. Burke made the motion, Ms. Page seconded it. Is there any discussion?
I think it was. The other way, yeah, other way. Ms. Page made it, I seconded.
Oh, I'm sorry, it was.
Was that Ms. Cosby?
It was me, yeah.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I am, all right, so, have you got it, Ms. Wilson?
Ms. Cosby made the motion and Ms. Burke seconded?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, is there discussion? I don't see any going once, going twice. Yes, Ms. Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, you know, my question with this is related to the, kind of, all the other work that we have to do as it relates to COVID and planning. And so, with this, I would like to get more detail from the administration on the timeline for this. And I wonder, you know, in light of the possibility that we may have a delayed start and, you know, get all of the other work that we need to do, I just want to get a little bit more clarification on the, you know, overall timeline and how this fits in with all the other work that.
Mr. Cameras?
Mr. Cameras, would you like me to speak to it?
Yes, thank you.
Yes, thank you. So, this is a pretty robust physical space overhaul, which is partly why the price tag is what it is. And this is at the, this is the hub of the STEM Academy, really in the STEM courses and the STEM experience. And it takes several weeks for installation, et cetera. And so, you know, this has been part of our STEM plan. We've been, you know, this amount reflects the actual cost based on the physical space specs, et cetera. One, while I know we're having a question about whether we'll even be back in school in person, you know, what I've heard from the board tonight is, we do hope and plan to be back in school at some point in the school year. And it's, you know, we've been operating as if, you know, we are continuing with the STEM Academy work, the adopted budget, and so have continued that in earnest, both schools have. And so, even if we have to delay the in-person launch of school, taking care of this detail now will enable us, I think, will be better served than if something, if we have to pivot later in the fall and wait until the fall to do this. And also, in the event that families, we do offer an in-person option, the longer we, if we delay this, it won't be ready for the beginning of the school year. So, those are just some of the rationale for why we're bringing the timing, why we're bringing this now.
Okay, I don't see anyone else going once, going twice. All right, Ms. Gibson, let's have our vote. Ms. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Door?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
And motion passes 8-0. All right, and now we have 4.03. Is there a motion to approve the personnel actions?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so Ms. Page moved and Mr. Young seconded. Is there anything that anybody, I mean, we can't really discuss them, but, any questions, any questions from Ms. Lee? No? All right, then let's have our vote. Ms. Gibson? Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Door?
Yes.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yeah.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
And Ms. Owen? Yes. Okay. Passes 7-0. All righty, does anybody have any announcements?
Don't have to write questions. I, Madam Chair.
Ms. Cosby, yeah?
Are we, are you about to adjourn?
Yes.
Okay, wait a minute. All right, so, no, I don't have an announcement. However, I do want us to be very clear on any additional information that we are expecting from administration so that we can have, make sure that our conversation is productive and we're not rehashing stuff that we've already talked about. So, what, do we have a list of the things that we're asking? So what, what, do we have a list of the things that we're asking from administration?
Mr. Cameras, do you have a list?
We have notes from throughout the discussion, so, yeah, we'll follow up.
All right, thank you. Is that, are you good, Ms. Cosby?
Okay, well, I, I just hope that, you know, some of the things that we talked about and things that we did ask for, that we do, that it is addressed during the next meeting. I just want to make, make a note of that.
Okay. Anything else for the good of the order? All right. I adjourn this meeting, good night.
Bye.